And the time is now 9:03 a.m. And you may call the meeting to order, Mr. President.
First of all, let me say good morning, Madam Clerk. Good morning, colleagues, staff members of the public. It is just, it's about 9:03 on November 4th, 2025, and we are calling this regular meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to order. Let's start with having the Clerk of the Board provide information on how the public can participate in this meeting.
Members of the public, the instructions to participate in today's meeting can be found on the published agenda. These instructions provide information on how to submit written comments and how to participate via Zoom. Live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom via laptop or computer, please click the interpretation globe icon and select the Spanish language. If you're using a smartphone or tablet, please locate the three-dot menu, select interpretation, then select Spanish language, and finally click Done. I will now ask our interpreter, Victor Hernandez, to repeat these instructions in Spanish.
Thank you, Sheri. Good morning, President Canepa, Honorable Supervisors, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, all county staff, members of the public, Victor Hernandez, Spanish interpreter. Buenos dias, miembros del público. Las instrucciones para poder participar en la reunión de hoy se pueden encontrar en el orden del día que ya ha sido publicado. Estas instrucciones dan información de cómo presentar comentarios tanto por escrito y por Zoom. Una vez más, les queremos también dejar saber que se les proporcionará interpretación en vivo, en directo, en esta reunión, en español, y para poder accederlos, que es al servicio de interpretación por vivo, por Zoom, ya sea con una computadora o una portátil, usted tendrá que hacer clic en lo que es un icono de un globo terráqueo, es decir, un mundo que aparecerá al fondo de su pantalla, y después seleccione lo que es el idioma en español. Ahora, si usted está usando un teléfono inteligente o una tableta, busque el menú de tres puntos, seleccione interpretación, luego seleccione el idioma en español, y por último, tendrá que hacer clic en Done o Listo. Muchas gracias. Thank you. Muchas gracias. Thank you for that. I will now move to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we now have the roll call?
Supervisor Spear? Here. Supervisor Corzo is absent at this time. Supervisor Mueller is also absent at this time. Supervisor Gochet?
Here.
And President Canepa.
Here.
Three present.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll now move to honoring the life of and board member remarks. Do any supervisors have comments or things for sharing honoring the life of?
I can get started today. We'd like to, this will be the first meeting honoring the San Mateo County Centenarians. I'd like to take time today to honor two women in San Mateo County who have done so much for our community. Ms. Annabelle Emery, who is 100 years old, and Ms. Juanita Thomas, who is 103 years old. And I believe we have a slide that we can put up with their beautiful pictures. They both live in San Mateo and are going to be a part of a panel moderated by former San Mateo Mayor Claire Mack on their secrets to life, living a life and productive, a long and productive life. This event will take place this Sunday, November 9th, at the San Mateo Downtown Library. I am making it a personal mission to pay tribute to every, each and every San Mateo resident who makes it to 100. If you know anybody who is turning 100 years old or older, would you reach out to me or my team and you can find my information on my page? And I don't know if we were able to show there.
I don't have it at this time, Supervisor, but I'm trying to pull it.
Okay, thank you.
And just for the record, Supervisor Corzo has arrived.
So, thank you.
All right. Are there any other comments from board members? Supervisor Corzo.
Good morning. This may have been said already, but I want to remind folks that it is Election Day, so don't forget to vote.
All right. Thank you very much. Supervisor Spear? Thank you. I'd like to honor today the life of Orhan Tolu, a dedicated realtor, respected businessman, and beloved father who recently passed at the age of 67. Known for his integrity, professionalism, and deep commitment to helping others find their homes, Orhan built lasting relationships throughout our San Mateo County community. He has associated with Century 21 Real Estate Alliance Group for nearly 30 years and was most recently its CEO. Beyond his work in real estate, he will remember for his kindness, generosity, and the pride he took for his family. His legacy lives on through the many people that he's touched as a trusted colleague, a loyal friend, and a loving parent. San Mateo County lost not only a skilled professional, but also a man whose worth and compassion reflected the very best of our community. Orhan Tolu's kindness, relationship, and leadership and warm smile left an double mark on everyone's lives. A service takes place today at noon at Skyline Funeral Home in Half Moon Bay. May he rest in peace. With that, we will move to public comment. This is the portion of the agenda that is set aside for members of the public to comment on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors but that are not on the agenda for today's meeting. For matters that are listed on the consent agenda and for matters that are set for closed session, public comment will be limited today to one minute. I'll ask the Clerk to start with public comment from those here in the chambers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did receive written comments that were submitted to the Board and also posted online. We'll start with comments from Zoom, as I didn't receive any speaker slips from chambers unless you'd like to speak on regular public comment. Okay? Go ahead and please proceed. Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, my condolences. I didn't hear totally about who passed or whatever, but my respect and condolences to that person and their family. I came to thank the Board and also concerns. I'm staying in a shelter, and I have the most amazing dog in the world. Well, we all feel that way about our, the loved ones. But I have the most amazing dog in the world, and we had one incident, and my dog has been asked to leave. One incident in over eight months. And I came to the Board the other day and asked to notify the... It wasn't the facility, it was administrators that don't know my dog. The facility wanted us there. They still do. But I just came to the Board because I don't think it's fair on the rules that they have where the most amazing dog in the world could be asked to leave because he's a vicious dog. So I just came to put that out there that maybe, you know. But thank you mainly, because I appreciate it. But if he has to leave, I become homeless.
Mr. Callagie? Any thoughts?
Yes, President Canepa, members of the Board. I'm happy to look into that and try to find some type of a resolution.
What's the name of your dog?
Prince.
All right.
Thank you.
Even Prince deserves a home. Thank you, okay? Do we have any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President. We'll now turn to comments on Zoom. We do have 10 hands raised at this time. So we'll start with Greg DeGues, and we'll go to Debbie W. Greg, please unmute and begin.
Hi, this is Greg DeGues of Montero. I speak on behalf of Red Alert Montero Moss Beach, whose goal is to have Caltrans mitigate the extreme fire danger posed by their neglected, overgrown, double-slide bypass right-of-way. Supervisor Mueller has supported our goal since April. However, there is a time-critical issue. To properly make the right-of-way fire safe, Caltrans will need to remove a significant number of mature trees that were invasive species grown over the last 75.
Greg, I apologize. I think we lost your audio. If you could unmute again?
I'm sorry.
Please continue.
What part did you hear? Nothing?
No, we probably heard most of it, just the last 20 seconds that's remaining on the time.
All right, so we need Caltrans to apply for a waiver under Newsom's state of emergency, and it has to be done by December 31st. Caltrans doesn't intend to apply for a waiver. The waiver process is quick, not needing detailed plans. The Coastal Commission has already indicated they favor granting such waivers to Caltrans and have met with Caltrans and advised them of that. Supervisor Mueller will bring a resolution to the Board requesting Caltrans fully mitigate the hazard and apply for a waiver. We will share details on the hazard with the Board via email. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Debbie W., followed by Chris. Debbie, please unmute and begin.
Hi. Good morning, county supervisors and agents. I come to you as Debbie, one of the people of the 50 American states, and I have become aware that it is our duty as the people to frequently remind our government servants of fundamental principles of law. A frequent recurrence to fundamental principles of the Constitution and a firm adherence to justice, virtue, and original law, including piety, justice, moderation, temperance, industry, and frugality, are indispensably necessary to preserve the blessings of liberty and good government. The main object of government is the protection and preservation of personal rights, private property, public liberties, and upholding the law of God. Thank you for your attention, and God bless.
Thank you. We'll now go to LaShawn Coleman, followed by Tad. LaShawn, please unmute and begin.
Yes, hi. You can hear me, right?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is LaShawn Coleman, and I am here to urge full implementation of SB 515 in San Mateo County. This new state law requires local governments to update data systems so people can identify as the innocent enslaved Black Americans. It's about visibility and truth, because when free men are lumped into a broad racial category, our real disparities in housing, health, and opportunity stay hidden. Other counties have already shown the power of disseminated data. San Francisco used it to reach Vietnamese and Tagan families left out of city programs. Santa Clara County used it to address high COVID infection rates in Filipino and Vietnamese communities. SB 515 in San Mateo County had given us the same chance to finally see and serve Black descendants of community accurately. So let's go beyond compliance and lead with transparency, fairness, and justice. Thank you, and have a blessed day.
Thank you. We'll now go to Tad, followed by Chris. Tad, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. I've noticed that you guys don't listen, so I understand that. But I still want to remind you that you even take a pledge of allegiance when you stand there, and it does say "one nation, under God", indivisible, right, with liberty and justice for all. You're not doing that. You're also supposed to supply us with a republican inform, republic, and support and defend the republic. You've taken an oath. I've called you out on that oath, and you guys are not respecting it. It says, "I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California." It's clear that you're warring against the Constitution by unconstitutionally removing the sheriff and attempting to appoint a sheriff. You are out of alignment. You are in maladministration and have been noticed. Those notices will be taking effect, I can assure you. Prepare yourselves.
Thank you. We'll now go to our next speaker, which is Martin Fox, followed by Bruce. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, President Canepa, my fellow county attorney, Mr. Niblin, Supervisor Spear, Supervisor Corzo, and Supervisor Gautier, and Mr. Callagie. Thank you very much for your service to the county. Please read yesterday's editorial in the San Francisco Chronicle, "Fix the State's Mental Health System: Make the County Safer and Healthier for Persons Living with Serious Mental Illness and Their Families" by supporting a vigorous implementation not only of the Governor's Care Court, but fixing the entire system by repealing the intellectually and morally corrupt Linerman-Petrus Short Act. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will go to Chris, followed by Bruce. Chris, please unmute and begin.
There we go.
Thank you.
Finally. No worries. I got called three times. No worries. Thank you very much. Supervisors, so I am calling on behalf of the Coalition for Just and Equitable California to inform you about the new state law, Senate Bill 515, that every single county and city in the state of California is now being asked to implement. As my colleague LaShawn said a few minutes ago, this new law requires your county and the cities in your county to update your hiring forms and start to create and count people specifically who are descendants of those who enslaved in this country as a specific group of people in your county and in your city. So we're here to inform you about this new law. We wrote the new law, so we're actually opening up ourselves and offering ourselves as a resource to your county and to your city to help you implement this new law. These changes have to be done by the 1st of January 2027. So you've got about 15 months to get into compliance, but we want you to, as my colleague said, to go even further than the state and lead and do even more than what the state requires. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bruce. Bruce, please unmute and begin.
Hello, Bruce Johnson. Hey, I just want to say, if you guys decide to vote on anything that usurps the people's original rights and liberties, you're making a grave mistake. I implore you to read your Constitution. Read it thoroughly, because it's going to come back, it's going to get you. And repent. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you. We'll now go to Yasmeen Abdul-Sami Oakley, followed by Lady D. Yasmeen, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. My name is Yasmeen Abdul-Sami Oakley. Good morning to all the supervisors, and good morning to Supervisor Gochet. I am calling from the East Palo Alto for Reparations and the Coalition for Just and Equitable California, and I'm here with big news. Senate Bill 515 just became law, and it applies directly to our city and county. Governor Newsom signed it, CJC, we wrote it, and to make sure, it's to make sure that every county in California, including ours, updates its hiring forms and data systems to create a new category of data collection for people who are descendants of persons enslaved and then emancipated from chattel slavery in the United States that live in California. This new law that lets us finally see the truth and act on it can be powerful. San Francisco, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll go to Lady D., followed by Darlene Crumdy. Lady D., please unmute and begin.
Good morning, Board. My name is Diane. I am one of the people seen in the Constitution of the State of California. Are you aware California is a constitutional republic, not a democracy? By, of, and for the people, not mob rule? Have you read the California Constitution? Do you realize it's the highest law in the land? The text of the Constitution is the standard to which you all swore oaths to uphold and must be obeyed. Therefore, using statutes or codes by creating arbitrary rules, procedures not pursuant to the Constitution are all unofficial acts of which there is no immunity? The preamble of our Constitution is a prayer. "We, the people of California, grateful to Almighty God for our freedom and order to secure its blessings, do establish this Constitution. So may God guide you in all righteousness and respect to His law and give you courage to obey the oaths that you swore to uphold." Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll now go to our last speaker, Andrew Boston. Andrew, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm still Andrew Boston from Save Silco. Thank you, and especially Supervisor Mueller for engaging with our community. We have a tough situation, and we're grateful you've been willing to listen. Since my last update, the sewage leak in Silco has passed five weeks. Happy birthday to the spill. It's tied to the infrastructure that Montero Water and Sanitary District bonded and maintained as public back in the 1980s, but recently decided was private with no sequel review, no public hearing, and no documentation to back that up. That decision has left homeowners stranded and raw sewage running less than 100 feet from the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. Five weeks of leaks isn't a maintenance or ownership problem, it's a management one. At this point, the leak's mostly gone underground, which means it's less visible but more dangerous and likely in the groundwater. This is exactly what happens when there's no coordinated plan for managing water in a landslide-prone coastal community. Sewer, stormwater, and groundwater are all connected, and right now, every agency is operating its own silo. Let's get this cleaned up before the sewage spill reaches voting age. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, we do have a few more hands raised. Would you like me to make a final call?
Yeah, and I think, do we have a couple cards?
Yes, they're for a different item.
Okay, great. Yeah, why don't we take the rest of the remote speakers?
Sure. So the final call has been made, and the last four speakers will be Sabrina, Sid Young, Bea Cola, and S. Grand. Sabrina, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I come to you as one of the people's sergers who holds all political power to remind you of the oath you swore to uphold the Constitution as servants of the people, which defines your grants of authority. Each member of the Board swore an oath before you entered respective offices as required by Article 20, Section 3 of the California Constitution. Noah Webster's 1928 dictionary defines an oath as "a sworn affirmation or declaration made with an appeal to God for the truth of what is affirmed." The appeal to God in the oath implies that the person appreciates his vengeance and renounces his favor. The declaration is false if the declaration is false, or the declaration is a promise, the person invokes the vengeance of God if he should fail to fulfill it. A false oath is called perjury. And then there's Maxxus of Locke, 84(c), punishment stew is, is the words of an oath be false? Black's law, 840. In 84f, every oath ought to be founded in certain knowledge. 84j, this word is to call God witness, and is an act of religion. This message is sent in the peace and love of Jesus Christ, praying that you repent and seek redemption and permit immediate care by necessity for all those who hold political power, the people. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Sid Young, followed by Bea Cola. Sid, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. Good morning, Sheri. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm just asking or requesting that you look into, requesting for Mark Church's office that instead of combining or blending, as they call it in the assessor's office, the fees on our tax bills, in the interest of transparency, would you please delineate all of the bonds we're paying for on every board? A lot of people on Nextdoor are confused. Cabrillo Unified School District, for instance, we're being charged now for three school bonds. Nobody really realizes that when they're voting, and nobody realizes when they get their bill what they're paying for. And we're paying for Measure S all the way back to 2012, which was a 40-year bond, Measure M, starting in 2018, and now a new one that just passed, Measure K. And everybody's tax bill went up, and they're all on Nextdoor going, "Why? Why'd my tax bill go up so much?" But I think it's important at the ballot box to realize when you are voting, you're layering more than one bond on top of each other, and it's very expensive because you're paying so much interest over time. So when you get your tax bill and it just says Cabrillo Unified School District, be much better to see how long you're paying still on Measure M, Measure S, and Measure K. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now go to Bea Cola and S. Grand. You were our last speaker, but the hand went down, so if you'd like to speak, please do raise your hand. Bea Cola, please unmute and begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I'm coming today as one of the people to remind you that we live in a constitutional republic, and you need to read your constitutions, which would be your federal and state, and follow those constitutions because you have taken an oath to them. I'd like to remind you that all constitutions call for the people to elect their public servants via election. I'd like to also remind you that there is no immunity for unofficial acts. If you look at Trump versus United States, which is a 2024 Supreme Court decision, it has decided that only official acts are provided to the servants' immunity. If you are doing unofficial acts, you have no immunity, and you are personally liable. So again, it is very important that you remember that we live in a constitutional republic, and you are under oath to follow the Constitution. So please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, that ends public comment at this time. I did receive the graphic, and I would be happy to share that for Supervisor Gochet.
Okay. Is the graphic available now? Thank you.
And for those who are coming in again, these are the two young ladies who are, who have turned 100. We have Ms. Annabelle Emery, who recently turned 101 years old, and Ms. Juanita Thomas, who turned 103. So happy birthday to these lovely ladies. Thank you.
All right, so we are now, first of all, let me thank the public for speaking and helping us understand the Constitution a little bit more. With that, we'll go to action to set the agenda and to prove the consent agenda items. Assuming there are no requested changes to the agenda, can I get a motion to set the agenda and prove the consent agenda?
So moved. And President Canepa, I just wanted to take a moment to let folks know that if there are any seniors in our community that are paying property taxes or school bonds, there actually is an exemption that exists for seniors through the county comptroller's office. And the website for that is smcre... So just so the public knows that if there are low-income seniors that are struggling with school bonds, there is an exemption that exists. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Great, thank you. Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We'll begin with the agenda with presentations, awards. There are two presentations today. This first item is a presentation of proclamation designating November 11th, 2025, as Veterans Day and recognizing service through Operation Green Light. Supervisor Gochet, could I ask you to please say some words to introduce this item and any speakers?
All right. Thank you so much. Each year on November 11th, we pause to honor all who have served our armed forces. We put service, who put service above self and continue to strengthen the foundation of our democracy. Veterans Day is not just a date on the calendar, it's a reminder of our shared responsibility to uphold the freedoms they fought to protect. This year, that reminder feels especially important. We are living in time of political division and uncertainty. From widespread staff cuts to ongoing government shutdown, many veterans and federal workers have been left in limbo. And as national policy debates grow more divisive, it is easy for people to feel overlooked or forgotten. But through it all, the courage and commitment of our veterans remain constant. They remind us of what unity and support looks like. Here in San Mateo County, we are proud to support our veterans, not only with words but with action. Through our Veteran Service Office, the Veterans Commission, and countless local partners, we help connect veterans and their families to housing, healthcare, education, and employment opportunities. These resources exist because we believe no one who serves should ever feel forgotten. And today, as we honor their service, we also reaffirm our promise to be there for them, not just on Veterans Day, but every day. This evening, the county building will be illuminated in green as part of a National Association of Counties' Operation Green Light Initiative. By shining a green light, we let our veterans know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported. It's a simple act with a powerful message that we recognize the unique challenges many veterans face and stand ready to help with them navigate. veterans face and stand ready to help with them navigate the path forward. To all who have served and to their families, we thank you. Your service strengthens the very heart of our nation. And I want to remind everyone that we will be having a veterans luncheon on November 13, and we're just nine days away from that event, and it will be held in San Mateo County, and it's at the, let me see, the Peninsula Italian American Social Club. We do have tickets that will be coming available today at noon. And I believe if you look at my website, I'm looking at Josh again, if you look at my website, you can find more information about the luncheon as well. And now, we have a proclamation. I see Claire has made it. We'd like to present a proclamation to Claire Cunningham, Director of Human Service Agency. I don't know if you want to have comments, or anyone else would like to have comments.
Any comments from my colleagues, or?
I would just, you know, having spent 15 years dealing with veterans issues when I was in Congress, I hope the linkage between our office and the congressional offices of both our members of Congress is very strong because they can be very helpful in resolving disability claims, housing issues, and the like, and we should certainly utilize the power of those offices.
Thank you, Supervisor Spear. And they will both be having words at the luncheon. So, Congressman member Licardo and Mullins will be there for the event.
Okay, Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the, well, one of the veterans that sits on this dais with us, and as well as, who is John Niblin, our county attorney, who served in the Army for, what, 14?
32 years.
32 years, oh, I should have doubled it, sorry. As well as Supervisor Warren Slocum. And I also want to give a quick shout out to my partner, who is actually a Marine Corps veteran and served for six years in several different countries. And, you know, I think many veterans have a lot of pride and don't always want to ask for help or take help even when it's there. So, if you have a veteran in your life, I do encourage you to make sure they know about what services they have a right for, they have a right to, and that they have earned. So, thank you, and I want to thank any veterans here for their service.
Great, thank you very much. I want to just recognize our county attorney, John Niblin. It's my understanding that John had retired from the Army as Lieutenant Colonel, and that John had served honorably as both an enlisted and commissioned officer, both as a reserve and on active duty, which I found kind of interesting, including a deployment to Iraq as a judge advocate. So, I just, John, I think on behalf of all of us, really want to thank you. I think, if it's okay with you, I'd like you to sort of say a couple of words, just as a veteran and for your service. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Board. Yeah, Veterans' Day, for me, it's always kind of a chance to reflect on family. You know, my grandfather served in Europe during World War II, and my great uncle served in the Army Air Corps, and my dad was a chaplain in Vietnam, and both my maternal and paternal uncles served during the Vietnam era as well. So, there's a, we can call it family business, but there's a lot of family connection to service in various branches of the military. So, it's something that I hold really dear, and I really, you know, this time of year, just reflect on how blessed, you know, we are as veterans here in San Mateo County to live in a, I guess, an environment, a constellation, where we have so many stakeholders who, you know, raise up and support veterans. You know, I think about the work of, and I hesitate to sort of list things because I know I'll miss organizations, but the VFW and the American Legion and the Marine Corps League and the Blue Star Moms and groups like that who, and support and, again, hold up veterans and their needs and the needs of their families. And, you know, the work of this county, the standing up a Veterans' Commission that is so robust and is so active in bringing to you kind of the needs and ideas on how to meet the needs of veterans, and the support that this Board has afforded to its reservists and its National Guard members over many years. You have a lot of folks in the county who have been deployed, myself included. I had a couple of years where I was in Iraq, and then I got sent to Fort Hood, and I always knew that on the home front, I had the support of my employers, the county executive, the Board of Supervisors, and the county council at the time. So, I feel really blessed with respect to all of that. And, you know, the other thing that I'd like to reflect on is just how diverse our military is. You know, one of my great honors during the time of my service was to assist many service members when I was in Iraq to naturalize. And I had the opportunity to attend a naturalization ceremony for service members who originated from places like the Philippines, or Peru, or Mexico, or El Salvador, Guatemala, China, lots of different places. These are all people who decided to be, you know, part of this tapestry that is the United States. So, again, I feel really blessed that you all acknowledge this day and that we live in this place where, you know, veterans are considered and supported. So, thank you.
Before we go to public comment, I really want to thank Supervisor Gaucho and your office. Warren Slocum, you know, initially has started this, but what you've done in sort of promoting and amplifying this event, I just really, you know, as President of the Board, I just really want to thank you for your outreach efforts. I received several emails, maybe more, but you guys have done an incredible job in promoting your upcoming event. Do we have any public comment?
Sure. Mr. President, I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so I'll ask on Zoom now to please raise your hand to comment on item number one for Veterans' Day. We do have one hand raised for Martin Fox. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Good morning again, President Canepa, and my fellow veteran county attorney, Mr. Niblin, Supervisors Spear, Corzo, and Gaucho, and county executive, Mr. Callagie, thank you for your service to the county. Please recognize the positive contributions of veterans, whether they were draftees or volunteers, volunteers, and their families, especially their stay-at-home partners and children who provide critical support for the mental health of service members on extended hazardous deployments, especially those deployments without appropriate state and national office holders' political and financial support for their missions and family members. Please help elect state and federal office holders who respect the service of others they may disagree with, but respect they and their family's rights to disagree. The world doesn't need any more cowards or bone spurs. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment, Mr. President.
Great, and thank you for your service, Marty. Supervisor Gaucho?
No, I just have one other comment. John, thank you so much. When you speak about families, I was military-dependent. My ex-husband served in the Air Force for 10 years. We were stationed at Vandenberg Air Force Base, so we get to, I was able to see some of the Titan missiles take off from Vandenberg. We were in Colorado Pensacola Naval Station and Interlik Air Force Base in Turkey during the time of the war. So, I know from the family's vantage point of what it's like to be in support of the military. So, again, thank you to all who have served our nation. The work that you have done has made this place better for all of us. And at this time, I would like to make a motion proclaiming November 11 as Veterans' Day and recognizing service for Operation Green Light. Second.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Gaucho?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now, we're going to ask Claire to come up. And John, could you come in and be in this picture as well? Would love it if you were in the picture. Thank you.
We'll move on to item two, a presentation of proclamation designating November 2025 as Transgender Day of Remembrance. Supervisor Corzo, could I ask you to please say some words and to introduce this item and speakers?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Today, our county joins communities across the nation in recognizing Transgender Day of Remembrance to honor the lives of transgender and gender diverse people lost to the acts of hate and violence. This day reminds us not only of those we've lost, but of our responsibility to protect and uplift those still facing discrimination. At a time when the rights and dignity of transgender people are being challenged across the country, we have a responsibility to firmly uplift inclusion, safety, and respect for all. Our county remains committed to being a place where everyone, regardless of gender identity or expression, can live authentically, openly, and without fear. Now, I'd like to invite everyone to join us for transgender flag raising, for our transgender flag raising ceremony tomorrow morning, as we raise the flag in remembrance, solidarity, and hope for a future where every person is free to live as their true self. I'm sorry, it's not tomorrow. It's November 12 at 8:30 a.m. at our brand-new flagpole outside of County Center. And now, I really, I'm extremely proud to be liaison to the LGBTQIA+ Commission, and here to receive the proclamation and share a few words are Dana Johnson and Vanessa Tapia. So, we'll ask you to come up after my colleagues here have a chance to share. But Dana and Vanessa are co-chairs of the LGBTQIA+ Commission and have done an amazing job of not just being civically engaged, but of representing a community and really demonstrating that the perspectives of our LGBTQIA+ community should be in every space. And shout out to each of you for reminding me of when I can do better, honestly, in doing that. So, I'll pass it over to you, President Canepa, in case anyone else wants to share.
Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have both a transgen... I have witnessed the excruciating challenges that they have faced and have recognized the importance of us speaking up for those who are transgender, protecting them, making sure they're aware of their rights, and to do everything we can to prevent suicides and the egregious murders that take place because of an intolerance that some people in our country don't recognize, that everyone has a right to live in a manner that is consistent with who they are and what they believe.
Thank you for bringing this, and this is what inclusion looks like. This is what we need. We need to have spaces where people feel like they belong, that they're seen, and that they're valued. So, this is an important day and a very important remembrance and proclamation that I support. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
I haven't received any speaker slips from chambers, Mr. President, but I do have one hand or a couple of hands raised in Zoom.
Okay.
So, we'll start with Bruce, followed by X. Bruce, please unmute and begin.
Okay. You know, what you guys are saying is actually kind of clownish, just for the simple fact that, you know, you're looking for safe space, but yet you want to put it into every space. You know, I don't understand the philosophy behind that, but one of these days, y'all are going to have to answer to God. Have a great day, and God bless.
Okay, we'll now go to X., followed by Natalie Krug. X., please unmute and begin.
Yes, well, everybody deserves to be valued for who they are, and it's horrific when people die at the hands of hate and discrimination. But I looked at the proclamation and the list of people that were allegedly killed because of their transgender identity, and just looking at the names I recognize, including a local San Franciscan, that person died of a drug overdose, a fentanyl addict in San Francisco. There was a couple other ones that died in domestic violence situations, and you really minimize people that have been through domestic violence when you categorize these murders based on hate for their transgenderism when it's not. And I would just hope that you would do better and classify the deaths accordingly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker, Natalie Krug, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo, for bringing this up, and to the rest of this Board of Supervisors, my name is Natalie Krug. I'm the San Mateo County Arboretist, and I am a transgender woman. I came to this Board in March for Transgender Day of Visibility, and thank you for your support to our community. And again, I recognize your support for the community and appreciate your understanding of the issues that are fought by the transgender community, including a disproportionate amount of hate and misunderstanding by the public resulting in hate crimes. And I'm forever thankful for your support, and thanks. I just have a great day.
Thank you. As another hand is raised, Mr. President, I'll just call this a last call for comments. Okay, and our final speaker will be Sabrina. Please unmute and begin.
Yes, I want to reiterate that you guys took an oath to the constitutions to uphold them. Free speech includes hate speech. There is no such thing as hate speech, as speech that you just hate, and it is a protected speech. And you keep going outside your grants of authority of the Constitution, and each time you do that, you've committed an unofficial act, which there is no immunity. I keep praying that you understand that the oath you took was also sworn, not just to the people, but to God. You don't have to continue down this path. I pray that you repent and you seek redemption, because we have a loving and forgiving God. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment, Mr. President.
All right. Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. Before I ask our speakers to come up, I just want to speak my piece here and ask members of the public who are uncomfortable having this space for other community members and use the name of God in vain, I would ask that you reflect on the way that Jesus actually lived His life and ask if you actually think you're in a position to cast stones. This proclamation is very important for many, many reasons, and we, as a Board and as a county, are committed to continuing to protect the safe space of all of our vulnerable community members and to celebrate the joy that they are very worthy of having in their lives here in this community. With that, I'd like to invite Dana Johnson and Vanessa Tapia, co-chairs of the LGBTQIA+ Commission, to share their thoughts before we present them with the beautiful proclamation we have here. Oh, yes, and I would like to move to approve this proclamation.
I'll second.
I'll take the roll call vote. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Gaucho?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Callagie, and staff. My name is Vanessa Lemos Tapia, and I am a co-chair for the LGBTQI Commission. I live in San Bruno, District 1, and I work with Teamsters Local 350, and I'm proud to be here today to represent the commission. I'll pass it over to you. the commission. I'll pass it over to you.
Good morning to everyone. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors and all staff and any other that put together the amazing proclamation for us to be seen in the visibility. I do thank you for that. I am Dana Johnson. I identify with a they and he pronouns. I am in District Five. And it's always an amazing time to be able to be recognized and actually be seen in a county to where you really want to uphold your identity and your authenticity. Before I get into my speech that I have, I want to first give thanks to my trans ancestors for their advocacy and allowing this space for me to be able to accept the proclamation and give the words. I stand before you proudly as a transgender non-binary advocate and ambassador within this county. But today, I hold space and I wear and embrace my role as an LGBTQIA+ Commissioner, co-chair with Vanessa. As someone who has lived the journey of resilience, truth, and visibility, it is an honor to accept the transgender day of proclamation, a powerful acknowledgement that our lives, our stories, and our struggles matter. T-DOR is not only a day to mourn those we've lost to anti-trans violence, but also a call to action to protect, affirm, and celebrate those of us who are still here. As someone who has navigated the world while embracing my identity as a trans non-binary person, I know firsthand challenges of being seen, the fear of rejection, and the strength it takes to live authentically. Yet, I also know the power of community, love, and advocacy in creating spaces like these where we exist safely and proudly. This proclamation is more than a document. It is a promise, a promise that we, as a community, will continue to honor the memory of those we've lost by fighting for justice, inclusion, and equality for all gender diverse people. So again, a special, special thanks to you, Board of Supervisors, for recognizing the importance of this day and standing in solidarity with the transgender and non-binary community. Together, we build a world where remembrance transforms into resilience and resilience into lasting change. Thank you again.
Real quickly, I just want to go over, the last decade, more than one person per month nationally has died due to transgender-based hate or prejudice, regardless of any other factors in their lives. This trend shows no sign of slowing. This year, we honor T-DOR with this proclamation and by raising the transgender flag next week on Wednesday, November 12th at 8:30 a.m., right outside, outside our courtyard of County Center. This is open to the public and all employees. Thank you Supervisor Corzo for leading this visibility. Additionally, the T-DOR reading of the names will be on the Thursday, will be on Thursday, November 20th at the South San Francisco Parks and Recreation Center and Library from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. There will be an altar, light food, and refreshments, a program featuring Chloé Corcoran, star of audio reality show Being Trans, and a closing with a candlelight visual. And also Dana Johnson will be the, the emcee. I also wanted to point out a smaller version of the T-DOR altar is now up on display in the lobby, and this altar will be up for the entire month of November so that members of the public and employees learn more about what T-DOR is and the individuals who died this year. Lastly, a reading of the names PowerPoint file is available and free for the public to download to hold their own services or T-DOR events. This download is now available on the LGBTQIA+ Commission website. And now, more than ever, we ask our allies for support with visibility, inclusion, equality, and safety in San Mateo County for our transgender and gender non-conforming community members. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now we will present the proclamation. Okay, I believe that President Canepa stepped out, and so I'll be chairing the meeting in the meantime. So we have just completed item number two. We are now moving on to the regular agenda. And up on the agenda next is health, and we will be adopting a resolution, or we will be considering adopting a resolution authorizing an agreement with Telecare Corporation. And I believe we have Dr. J. Africa to present on this item. Welcome, Dr. Africa.
Good morning, honorable supervisors, county execs, and community. So the item for your consideration is to approve an agreement with Telecare Corporation for two years to operate the crisis hotline and the mobile crisis response team dispatch services. As you know, Telecare has been providing mobile crisis response since May 2024, but the dispatch component was provided through Star Vista, because they also had the crisis hotline. So when Star Vista closed unexpectedly, these services needed to be moved to another provider to prevent gaps in services. Again, given the unexpected closure, we are requesting the board to waive the requirement for an RFP or a request for proposals because of this emergency and the emergency nature of the situation. And because Telecare has been providing similar services and has experience in counties like San Diego and Stanislaus, we feel like they actually can do it for this temporary year. Our plan is to issue a competitive RFP in March of next year. So that's sort of the point, because just, we needed an emergency. And as you know, the mobile crisis mandate is a mandate through the state. So I'm here to ask for your approval and consideration for this contract. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Do any of my colleagues have questions? Supervisor Spear?
Thank you, Madam President. How much were we paying Star Vista for this service?
Pretty much about 1.5, I believe. So there's a little confusion, because the hotline is also, the, the state mandate requires that the mobile crisis response is linked through either our access center or, or, or the hotline. And Star Vista was providing all of that 24/7 for many, many years. So that was pretty much the amount. We are giving Telecare startup costs, so it's a little bit more than the usual contract we've had with Star Vista to get them up and running.
So this contract is until September 2027?
Twenty-seven. It's two years.
So why are we doing a two-year contract?
We feel like we need sort of a little bit of stabilization for them to be able to kind of do. Well, Telecare is providing all the services, so we feel like they can actually do it for, for two years.
But we're going to an RFP in March of next year?
It'll take a while for things to set up when we do an RFP. We take a few months to actually get things set up. You know, we have to do a review and kind of negotiate. So we're kind of doing things a little bit in advance in preparation for the next year, so we're not waiting until the last minute.
I understand that. But if we were going to an RFP in March, by December of '26, we probably would be in a position to have a new contract come January '27 instead of September '27, correct?
Some, well, that's the goal, but sometimes some of these negotiations take a long time.
Okay. I just, I prefer RFPs to sole contracts. And so I just think that we should be cognizant of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Supervisor Gochet?
Thank you. Thank you for this. I'm just wondering, with the 100% outcome target, how are the metrics or independent evaluations in place to track results? How are we tracking results with?
So from the, at least the Star Vista, before, they would give us reports on how many calls do we get every, every month? How long is the call? What are the basic questions or issues that people bring up? How quickly did they respond to the call? How quickly they respond, answer the calls? All of those metrics were sort of included. So that's the same metrics that we are asking them. And remember also, we have provided some information to the board of like how fast, you know, our mobile crisis response go to be deployed. So those are reports that we provide the board. We haven't actually done a subcommittee report, so we probably will need to do that next year.
And then what do we learn from Star Vista? And how do we ensure that we're, we're staying in communication and watching what's happening with this organization?
Well, Star Vista has closed. Obviously, we are meeting regularly with many of our, all of our providers. We have monthly meetings and audits and conversations with them to really kind of understand, especially as we roll out this sort of new service. We're doing the best we can to kind of understand the situations that they're in, given, I think, the circumstances that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a question. I was wondering if you can tell us about whether the 988 number and the M-C-R-T number will be going to the same place through Telecare?
That's a very complex, there's a complex response. The 988, although designated by the federal government, is actually state-funded. The mobile, meaning there's a whole different budget and compliance that's sort of separate from the Department of Healthcare Services. When we started this, there was a few different providers. So the goal really is to have one number, but we're not there yet. I have spoken with our public, our 911 colleagues. The problem, though, is when you call the 988, they are not able to do geolocation at this point. So you might have a 650 number, and it'll go to Santa Clara. So at least the 650 number is a local number. And the people who will be answering that will know the county resources. So that's still an issue that we're working with the state and wait, and waiting until that function in 988 will be resolved.
Thank you. So I'm going to take a moment to share the, the number that I, I feel like everyone in our county should have programmed in their phones. And this is the mobile crisis response number for our county. It's 650-579-0350. And this is a number that you can call if you, if you witness someone being in crisis, but that does not need a, a police response. This is for mental health crisis. And it's something that this community advocated for for many, many years. We have it now. And I'll just speak to Telecare for a moment. I support this contract, especially because through my five years of being a, a social worker with Golden Gate Regional Center, I got to visit several Telecare facilities. And they were, they are very well-run. And Telecare is the statewide expert on running these mobile crisis response networks. And I think they do a great job. And I, I do recognize Star Vista was a part of the equation, and they have now shut down. And so I am thankful that Telecare is stepping up to, to fill this role, because we need to continue this service and, and, and improve upon it. So I'll say the number one more time, and that is 650-579-0350. And I'll just add that I, I will be making sure that all of the PDs in my district have this phone number and in a partnership. I, I do believe that's already in the works, but it is a little difficult with over 20 cities in our county. So thank you for the information. And with that, I will take a motion on this item. Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Corzo. We can go ahead and maybe start with some public comment. I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, but I do have a hand raised in Zoom. So Sid Young, if you could please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I was interested to find out how they're going to treat the mid-coast. Supervisor Corzo mentioned 20 cities, and Hafn Bay contracted with Star Vista and then kind of extended it to cover the mid-coast. I'm wondering, will they also provide service to the unincorporated area? Because we're spread pretty thin with, with the Sheriff's Department right now. And there isn't too much anyone can do about that. But I, I don't know that they're going to be prepared to take on the mid-coast when it's so vast and the, there's not very many little towns, but there are a lot of acreage out here. So maybe you could talk about that. How many people, are they, out of Santa Clara made it sound like when you said that they might confuse 650 area codes out of Santa Clara? Are they local, or are they actually in Santa Clara? Thank you.
Thank you. And no further comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'll actually take a moment. I do think it's a, it's a fair question. And the city of Hafn Bay and the coast side did have a different response through, I'm forgetting the name of the organization.
CARES.
CARES, the CARES program. But that is no longer operating. So would you mind clarifying?
Yeah, we are, so Telecare and the mobile, we have five teams right now that actually go all over the county of San Mateo, including the coast. So it's just unfortunate that the CARES program kind of went away, but we have been able to, the mobile crisis team have been able to respond to the coast. And they are shifting what they're doing around per region. So they are actually having folk or teams stationed around the regions. So it's a much faster response.
Thank you so much. Okay, back to Sherry. Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor, so I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa is absent. Motion passes three to zero and two absent.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item number four, which is a public works item. So I'd like to invite Director Ann Stillman to present.
Good morning, honorable board members, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin. Yes, waiting for my slides. Are we good? Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. But it's not advancing, so is it in the?
I, I think there's like an icon. There we go.
Okay, thank you. That looks like it. Okay, someone's missing. All right.
And just for the record, President Canepa has returned at 10:11 a.m.
Okay, so the item before you is our recommendation that the board approve a resolution that would authorize on-call public safety equipment and upfitting service agreements with three different vendors in the dollar values that are shown on the screen. Our recommendation is for a five-year term for these agreements with an aggregate value of $6 million. We are recommending the dollar values that are shown here based on our past experience with upfitting and what we anticipate in the future. And you may ask, what is upfitting? It is modifying or equipping a new vehicle after it leaves the factory to ensure that it is ready for its intended operational use. We have listed many things that upfitting may include. This is not an exhaustive list, but it just gives you a sense for some of the items that need to be put on particular vehicles and equipment before they're ready for use. Here are some visual examples. On the left-hand side, you can see some before pictures, like the way we purchased the truck, what it looks like when we're ready to send it out with staff to do work. And on, on the bottom- And on, on the bottom left, you'll see a vehicle that needed to be outfitted for the sheriff's use. Here are some other examples, different types of upfitting racks that are used, decals, and preparing the vehicles for the departments. We work with many different departments for upfitting. We outfit over 70 vehicles per year and look forward to executing agreements so that we can have on-call services with the proposed vendors. Here are some other examples, just pictures of, you know, the way we need to store our tools and equipment, lights, so that when we respond in, at nighttime, when it's dark, we're, we have the ability to see and how we store our tools and equipment on the trucks. For the RFP process, we required that vendors be within 25 miles of our corporation yard, provide a lifetime workmanship warranty and support equipment repurposing for future vehicles. And our RFP, or Request for Proposals, was posted on the county's e-procurement system and on the department's website. We shared the RFP with vendors we thought would be interested within a certain area. We received six proposals, four were deemed responsive. And we had folks review the proposals and determine the best vendors based on quality and value. And that concludes my presentation for today, and I am available to answer questions if you have any.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you, Chair Corzo, Vice Chair Corzo. Do we have any comments from the, the board? Yes.
Thank you. Director Stillman, I, I think you mentioned this, but just for the sake of clarity, can you remind us about how many vehicles are outfitted per year?
Yes, so based on our past records, we're, we're upfitting 70 to 100 vehicles per year.
Thank you.
And they, they, I mean, just FYI, they, they vary really in cost. And some have a higher turnover rate too, maybe sheriff vehicles because of the usage. But some are more expensive to outfit. And we, we really, we work with multiple departments. So really interesting to think about how they all have different bodies of work and to get them ready to have their new pieces of equipment, get out and do their jobs. It's really important.
Thank you so much.
Are there any additional comments? You know, Anne, I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Can you talk about, in terms of this procurement? How do you, how does staff really sort, is it, there's an RFP process? Just, just for the general public, so they know, this, this is their taxpayer dollars. Can you speak to sort of the selection process?
Sure. So one of the things that, or what we tried to mention in the board report too, was in the past, these services were provided under purchase orders. But because the services include the equipment and the vendor staff time to install the equipment, because much of it is specialty, we were informed by the procurement department that we really need to run a request for proposal process in which we, we identified the work we're looking for, the types of parts and pieces and the service, and how quickly they can respond, and lots of details in terms of what we were looking for. And then we posted it, the county has an e-procurement system. We posted it there so that vendors or potential proposers were aware of it and give them specific deadlines by which they need to propose. It's all done through the e-procurement system. And then we evaluate what's been proposed to us based on what they've stated in their proposal and what services they can provide, location, et cetera, and then also based on cost. And that's how we have developed our recommendations that are in front of you today for three particular vendors.
And in your professional opinion, do you, do you, do you find this process to be a better process than you, than you used in the past? Just frankly, yeah?
Yeah, well, I think in the past, you know, having a purchase or being able to request a purchase order and have it approved was certainly a straightforward means to get the equipment and get the services. But because the requirements have, have been explained to us, and it requires more in terms of services, really going out with a request for proposal and being able to have a longer duration on-call agreement to be able to provide these services and set ourselves up for that, for the success of our department and also the departments we serve, I think is a great means to get to where we need to be able to provide the services to other departments.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any additional questions?
Yeah, thank you. And Anne, thank you for the, the report. It reminds me of Palo Alto, how we would do our vehicles as well. But can you talk about how the work will be distributed amongst the, the vendors? How, how is that done?
Through task orders. So we would be, some of the vendors, part of it is evaluating what services they can provide and what equipment. So some of it is a little bit more specialized, that not all three may be able to provide the same equipment and services. So some of it will be based on that, and others will be based on, we can take a look at what they've proposed and the dollar values, and then ask for proposals from their task orders. And some of it will be based on timing too. So if we're looking at duration for being able to complete the work, I think that will weigh into our decision-making as well.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
Sure, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker cards from chambers for item four, so I'll turn to public comment on Zoom at this time. Please raise your hand to speak for item four. We do have one hand raised, so I'll make a final call at this time to please raise your hand, and I'll announce the final name for this item. Okay, our first and last speaker will be Tad. Tad, please unmute and begin.
Well, as I continue to watch you act as if you're drunk sailors with no budget and no budgetary constraints, you spend, spend, spend in this county. But then on the other hand, your next subject matter, matter will be associated with the fiscal cliff that this county is going to run into if you don't get the funding from the state and our vehicle license fees. So you need to be fiscally responsible. We are watching, we the people. You have been put on notice, and this is putting you on notice again. Please be fiscally responsible. We don't need this type of equipment at this time. We can get by with what we have. Do not continue to spend like drunken sailors. It's an embarrassment. And you guys up there partying like it's some kind of a big little gathering for your NGO operations, we're watching. Be, be advised. We got you. Have a great day.
Thank you, and that concludes public comment, Mr. President.
Great. Just, just for the public, in terms of, you know, our public, our finances, you know, our SAMCRA is funded at 92%. That's our retirement system. That is, I believe, number one or two in the county, in the state, in the state. In addition to that, in terms of our reserves for the county, I believe we have one of the highest percentage-wise in the state of California, maybe the United States. So I just want to make sure, because of board's fiscal, this board's fiscal prudence, as well as previous board's fiscal prudence, that we're in the position. Obviously, there are headwinds and there are challenges, but I do think that the record should reflect that we're in a very good position, although there may be uncertainty relative to the federal and state government. And so with that, can I get a motion on this item?
Second.
Great, I'll take the roll call vote. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stillman. That brings us to item five. Item five is another agreement. It's an amendment to an agreement with the San Mateo Transit District by which the district receives law enforcement services from the sheriff's office, extending to the term by five years to 2030, and providing reimbursements to the county for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year in the amount of $9,633,203. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning, and thank you, President Canepa, and honorable members of the board, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin. I'm Lieutenant Brandon Hetzel, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. I'm currently the lieutenant and bureau commander assigned to our Transit Police Bureau. And today I'm here asking the board to adopt a resolution authorizing an amendment to the sheriff's office agreement with the San Mateo County Transit District. The most recent contract agreement between the county and the district expired on June 30th, 2025. The district now wishes to exercise the option written into the contract to extend the agreement for an additional five-year term and receive law enforcement services from the sheriff's office through June 30th of the year 2030. For the fiscal year 2025, 2026, the Transit District will reimburse the county in the amount stated of $9,633,203, and revised calculated rates will be effective and apply July 1st of each year of the term. I do have a few slides to kind of go through to talk about the background and partnership that we've had with the Transit District here at the sheriff's office. So first off, the sheriff, sheriff's office has been the contracted law enforcement provider, providing services to both SAMTrans and Caltrain for 23 years dating back to 2002. The current contract is a 20-hour contract that starts at 5:00 a.m. and ends at 5:00 a.m. daily. The service area, the Caltrain rideaway, is pretty vast with 77 miles of track, 32 stations in between the cities of San Francisco and Gilroy. We also service and provide law enforcement services on 76 bus routes that span throughout San Mateo County and into parts of San Francisco and Palo Alto, essentially traveling across three counties. Some of the other service agreements within the contract include general patrols, criminal investigations, rapid response to calls for service, high-visibility enforcement on our trains, buses, and stations, and a strong security presence for special events that call for it when our ridership increases at certain stations throughout our line for such events like Giants games, 49ers games, beta breakers, and various concerts held in either Santa Clara or San Francisco. With the relationship has come a strong collaboration with SAMTrans and Caltrain, ensuring the safe and reliable transit for our ridership. So some of the impact and the outcome that would come if we continue this contract agreement is that we could build off of the established positive working relationship that has existed for over 23 years between the deputies, train conductors, bus operators, and the teamwork that we formed during our high-visibility enforcement. This has ensured that we carried out our law enforcement services smoothly, safely, and with minimal disruption to our passengers. The increased safety visibility enhances the community confidence, promotes public trust, and makes our ridership feel safe and secure while using our transit system across three counties. Acts as a deterrent unsafe and disruptive behavior, and it sends a message that we stand with the Transit District and we take well-being and rider safety as our top priorities. Now I want to discuss some of the cost efficiency and value of having one contracted law enforcement provider to provide those law enforcement services to the Transit District. With one contracted enforcement provider, you have shared resources which reduce costs across all jurisdictions. It allows for collective training, technology, and our dispatch systems, and reduces the overall, the overhead. And those savings don't just come from the, the reduced cost value, but also the standardization in providing consistency and the enhanced interoperability and communication between agencies. We have proven operational success with the district. You know, we can respond, calls for service, timely, but we can also track our performance, being that we're one agency working with the district, where we can make necessary adjustments to continue that successful partnership and efficient transit system and experience. So as stated, over 23 years, we've had the ability to communicate directly with the Transit District, which has led and to less friction for everybody involved because we operate under one umbrella with the same set of policies, expectations, and guidelines and reporting structure. So ultimately, you know, better efficiency with a stronger relationship is going to lead to better service to the community that we serve. So we'd like to see that continued. When it comes to the fiscal impact of the agreement and should we continue it, this is what our current staffing structure and model looks like within the bureau. As you can see, there is one lieutenant bureau commander. There are two sergeants assigned, a full-time detective, seven full-time deputy sheriffs, three full-time K-9 handlers, four community service officers, one management analyst, for a total of 19 full-time employees assigned to our bureau. The personnel cost for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 for the staff would be $6,875,608. The operating cost would be $1,857,595. And the augmented services, essentially the supplemental overtime for the security details that we would staff at the district's request, would total about $900,000. And that would bring the overall adjusted cost to that figure mentioned earlier of And that amount has already been included and factored into the sheriff's office fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. So what we're asking the board to consider is to renew this agreement so we can ensure the continuity of our law enforcement services to the San Mateo County Transit District through the year 2030. This will help us maintain safety, reliability, and trust across the transit system that our communities deserve. And it will only allow us to strengthen our inter-agency collaboration that already exists between SAMTrans, Caltrain, and the sheriff's office. So I appreciate the consideration, and I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Are there any questions? Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I've served on the Transit District Board now for about three years, and this is the first time I'm seeing this item. So it's really informative. I didn't realize that the Transit District contracted with the sheriff's office, but it makes a lot of sense because it is probably very complex to manage, you know, many, many contracts with individual cities. I'm just wondering about, can you tell me what, what this service tangibly looks like? So I'm curious, like, let's say there's an issue at a bus stop. Does the sheriff's office respond instead of the local PD? Or how does that work exactly?
So like, if it's at a bus stop, we would obviously get notified. Depending on our positioning, we may not be the first to respond. So we do work with our allied agencies in a partnership to handle service calls. But ultimately, if it falls under a transit property issue, whether that's at a, you know, bus stop or a train station, we would be the primary investigating agency.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Supervisor Spear?
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant, for that presentation. Are you also providing these services for Caltrain?
Yes, Caltrain and SAMTrans, yes.
Is there a provision for SAMTrans to indemnify the county if there is a case that arises of fault relative to the actions of one of the deputies?
To my knowledge, there is. I, that's something I can get back to you on. I'm new to the assignment, having just rotated out of the courts. And I did ask one of our deputy directors of finance to be here. He is not. So when it comes to those legalities, I may not have all the answers, but I'm happy to get back to you.
So I think it's very important that SAMTrans indemnify the county, and I would request that this be put over until we can get an answer to that question.
Okay. All right. You know, let me ask you a couple, a couple of questions. And I know we, we don't have anyone from the, the sheriff's office. I'm sorry. Were you, were you speaking?
No. No, sir.
Yeah, I know. So, excuse me. So can you talk a little bit about the overtime? So the overtime, so I sit on both the Caltrain Board and the SAMTrans Board, right? And so can you talk about the, the overtime is up to $900,000, is that correct?
That's what it's up to, should that be needed.
Okay. And so it's up to $900,000. Do we know previously if we've gone past a, a number, if it was $900,000? Does the county, who eats the cost on that?
And that's a question I suspected. And I, like I said, with the finance department unwilling to show essentially, I, I don't have the answer for that. But that is projected based on, you know, like Giants games, 49ers games, concerts. So as far as what I understand is that money would go back into what would be considered like a slush fund?
So, so here's what I'm going to ask. Supervisor Spear, I agree, I agree with you. I think we're going to continue this item to the next meeting. I think there are a couple of things through the county executive that I like to see. I like to see someone from the finance department, from the sheriff's office, to be able, it's kind of, it's very unfair to you. So I'm not, it's not a criticism of you. But this is a rather large contract. So if we can bring this back to the board and with someone from the finance or administration office from the sheriff's office, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, in the meantime, I know, we'll also pursuant to Supervisor Spear's request, look at the indemnification clauses on the contract.
Can I ask, thank you, Mr. President. I think all of these contracts are advantageous to the jurisdiction, and I think we want to continue to provide these services. But I don't think we should be taking hits as a result of it. So we should... But I don't think we should be taking hits as a result of it, so we should not incur losses. And I don't know to what extent we have the ability to identify whether or not we have losses. And your question, Mr. President, about the overtime is a legitimate one, one I was concerned about as well. So I want to make sure these contracts reflect what our costs are and that we are protected from, you know, issues that may arise by providing those services to the jurisdiction. Having served on SAMTrans and the Transportation Authority, I too support them, but I want to make sure that these are relationships that reflect the actual costs.
All right, before we make the motion for potential continuance, do we have any public comment inside or outside the chamber?
Sure, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so I'll go ahead and take comments on Zoom at this time for item number five. We have Bruce on the line. Bruce, please unmute and begin.
Okay, I just wanted to say that you guys exercised some good judgment in tabling this, and I pray that you make the right decision. God bless.
Thank you. No further comments, Mr. President.
Let me read back to the Board. Are there any comments? And Supervisor Spear?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Spear.
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion to continue. This item passes.
All right, we'll now move on to item six, a public hearing. Today, we are conducting a public hearing to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision not to approve the requested coastal development permit, design review, and variance to allow a new three-story, single-family residence in unincorporated El Granada area. Director of Planning and Building, Steve Monowitz, do you want to introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, President Canepa. Good morning, Supervisors. Good morning, Mr. Callagie and Mr. Niblin. I'm here today to present to you an appeal of a lack of an approval by the Planning Commission to approve a new home in the El Granada area. The Planning and Building Department previously recommended approval to the Planning Commission, and it was a two-two vote, so it failed to be approved. The applicant has appealed that decision, so we have a unique situation where the applicant is also the appellant. Okay, so the project's located on a conforming and legal 7,000-square-foot parcel. It's located within an area that's been designated as the Montecito Riparian Corridor, which is associated with an intermittent drainage channel, sometimes referred to as San Augustin Creek, which is located approximately 116 feet from the project site. It's within an existing residential neighborhood and gains its access from San Carlos Avenue, a public roadway. So I pulled this slide from the department's website. This is a map of the Montecito Riparian Corridor that we have had published on our website for decades now in the interest of informing property owners and potential purchasers of lots within the area of the natural constraints that exist. The subject parcel is identified by the red arrow, and as you can see, it's right on the edge of that riparian corridor, and it's currently vacant. Here we have an aerial photograph of the site, which shows the dense vegetation that characterizes the Montecito Riparian Corridor. And as you can see, it's adjacent to an existing developed neighborhood. Okay, on the upper right, we have a photo from San Carlos Avenue showing the location of the project. And on the bottom, we have the site plan, which shows the footprint of the proposed home. And as you can see, the footprint is somewhat unusual in shape, and that is because it really has been dictated by the required setback from the riparian vegetation, which needs to be a minimum of 30 feet. You'll also see that it's fairly close to the front property line, and that is because at the department's recommendation, the applicant requested a variance to the front setback in order to be able to comply with the resource protection provisions of our local coastal program. And it's the staff's position that protection of these sensitive habitat areas is more important than providing the standard front setback. It's also the staff's position that accommodating the requested variance is necessary to allow the applicant to make reasonable economic use of their property. Here we have the elevations of the home. To the left is the view you will see from San Carlos Street, which makes it appear as a two-story residence. However, when you get to the backside of the home, which will not be visible from public areas, you can see it does extend up to three feet. And one of the reasons for that is the applicant is seeking to build a reasonable amount of square footage within a very small footprint in order to protect the riparian resources. Here we have the side elevations. The one on the bottom left is the one that will be adjacent to the developed site next to this project site. And the one on the upper right is the one that will be facing the undeveloped area and will not be visible to the neighborhood. So the review process involved many steps. The first was addressing the California Environmental Quality Act. We did an initial study, negative declaration, and we received a number of comments, including from Green Foothills. Green Foothills identify the potential presence of a wetland, and we also received comments from neighbors with concerns about the proximity of the project to the riparian corridor. One of those concerns had to do with whether or not it encroached within the drip line. And noted by the third bullet, it's not the drip line that establishes the boundary of the riparian corridor. It's rather whether there's 50% or more of riparian species within that area. All the required mitigations to ensure that the project does not have a significant impact on the environment are included as conditions of approval. So the next step following sequel review was design review. This went to the coastside design review committee, who reviewed and recommended conditional of the approval of the project, finding that the project is proportional and complementary to other homes in the neighborhood, that the design conforms to the existing topography of the site, and that the scale of the front entry is compatible with other features of the house. The condition recommended by the design review committee requires the applicant to replace board and batten siding on the south elevation, pop out with stucco, and reduce encroachments into the riparian buffer. Okay, the final step in the process was to act on the coastal development permit application, and the most significant issue raised by that application was whether or not the project conformed to our sensitive habitats component. So this has been studied in depth, starting with a riparian boundary assessment prepared in 2020, which found that the creek is over 100 feet west of the property. There was a subsequent delineation in 2024 that confirmed there's no wetlands on the subject property, but it was unable to confirm whether or not there may be wetlands on adjacent properties. One of the reasons, the primary reason for that is this is very dense vegetation, and it's also surrounded by other private property owners. So the ability of the biologists to enter into the dense vegetation and also due to the need to gain permission from other property owners really restricted their ability to definitively determine whether or not wetlands exist. As I mentioned, the setback requirements of our LCP require at least 30-foot setback from the edge of riparian vegetation, which the project, for the most part, complies with, except for some minor encroachments that are cantilevered and won't actually extend within the 30-foot boundary onto the ground. So I mentioned that the Planning Commission had a split vote during that hearing. The main concerns raised by commenters include the height of the residence relative to surrounding residences. As you saw in the elevations, at the rear portion of the structure, it does appear to be three feet. Most residences in the neighborhood are one or two-story. But given the constraints of the parcel and the need to accommodate a reasonable use, we believe that the design has been established in a manner that really minimizes the impact on the surrounding community. Of course, there was concerns raised about the variance to the front setback. It's three feet from the property line when a greater distance is typically required. And then concerns about the impact the project will have to the sensitive riparian environment adjacent to it. It's a constrained street. This is kind of a dead-end street, so there was also concerns about fire access and, you know, the impacts of parking on the neighborhood. And we have a condition, number 43, that requires the applicant to work with the fire department to ensure that the appropriate access to fire vehicles will be provided. So the department's recommending that the Board of Supervisors grant the appeal and adopt the initial study and approve the coastal development permit, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Monowitz?
Thank you for the report. Can you tell me a little bit more about the riparian, is it a creek? What are we?
Yeah, so riparian habitats are associated with creeks, streams, rivers, where you have a specific type of vegetation that's dependent upon the proximity of the water and the high groundwater. And that type of vegetation complex is crucial to the survival of a number of rare and threatened species. So, you know, our local coastal program establishes very stringent requirements to protect sensitive habitats such as riparian corridors. In this case, the riparian corridor is associated with an intermittent creek, which means it doesn't flow year-round. It flows when it's rainy and wet out. The setbacks from intermittent creeks are a bit less than they are for what we call perennial creeks, which would flow year-round.
Thank you. And with that, being close to the creek, is there any concern for, I know we've been hearing from other coastal areas where the creek and the water has had an impact on the foundation of the property, or is there any concern for that to happen?
No, and that's because the project site is over 100 feet from the creek itself. The issue really has to do with the habitat that exists between the creek and the proposed development site, which constitutes that sensitive riparian habitat I was describing earlier.
And then lastly for me, the, in the, in the one of the photos, I saw the fire hydrant that's, it looks like it's on the property as well. And I saw a question with the, is that, or the concern is for the fire department to have access to that hydrant, or would that hydrant be moved because of the property?
I don't think the hydrant would need to be moved, but the concern is ensuring that fire has access both to the project site and to the adjacent development, both during and after construction, considering things like parking and other potential obstacles that could get in fire's way. And that's why there's the condition of approval that requires the applicant to work with the fire district to establish the appropriate restrictions on parking and so forth, so that they will be able to access that fire hydrant and any other areas they need to get to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other additional questions? Supervisor Corzo? No? Great. Thank you very much. I do have a couple of questions. There was a two-two vote at Planning Commission. What were the commission members' names? Do we have the?
I can get that to you. I don't recall off the top of my head. Thank you, Supervisor.
Let me find them here. The As were Garcia, D4, Serrano Quan, D5, Gupta, D1. Those were the As. The Ns were Gupta, D1, and Hanson, D2.
Okay. And let me ask you, my understanding is, do we still have a vacancy in District Three?
Yes, we do, although to my understanding, that appointment will be brought before the Board in the near future.
Great. And so, you know, there are many items that come before us from the Planning Commission. Two-two is a little bit, a little bit different and unusual. Why, you know, from a staff perspective, why do you think, what's the disagreement? And the reason I say that is, you know, are there solutions that you think might help us either way in understanding how we could potentially get there?
Yes, President Canepa. You know, I think our Planning Commission always looks very closely at requests for variances, which is, in essence, a request for an exemption from a standard that other people in the neighborhood need to comply with. And so they look very carefully at those requests. On the other side of the coin is the sensitive habitat that we're seeking to protect and that necessitates the variance in order to enable the property owner to make a reasonable use of their property. I think the staff has been consistent in placing greater weight upon resource protection than a front setback requirement. So I think from a staff recommendation standpoint, we consistently take that position where the protection of sensitive habitats or other environmental resources may indeed warrant variance to a standard that, in this case, we don't believe will result in any adverse impacts to the community. I think some of the, two of the commissioners disagreed with staff in that regard. You know, they were concerned about the reduced setback. They were concerned about fire access, and they were concerned about the height of the structure as it relates to other homes in the vicinity. The fact that it was a split vote, though, does not change the staff perspective on the matter, and so we believe the recommendation before you is the appropriate one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like you to kind of go through the Coastal Commission review, which appears to suggest that this individual has met all of the Coastal Commission requirements. Could you just kind of flesh that out a little bit for us?
Sure, I'll do my best. So the Coastal Commission enforces the Coastal Act, a state law that requires local governments to review and regulate development in a manner consistent with the Coastal Act. And to do so, local governments need to develop a local coastal program. Once our local coastal program is certified by the Coastal Commission, we do the permitting. And our, some of our permits can be appealed to the Coastal Commission. So in this instance, you know, the county is the permitting authority. The Coastal Commission is the appellate authority. And as in, with, is the case with all coastal development permits, we send a referral to the Coastal Commission to give them an opportunity to let us know if they have concerns about a project. And I think the comments that we receive from the commission staff are supportive of the approach recommended by county staff, which places greater emphasis on the importance of protecting the habitat as opposed to requiring the front setback that is typically required.
On page eight of the document, it goes through them, and I think for the record, we should just outline them, that the Coastal Commission wanted to confirm that the identified creek was an intermittent creek with a 30-foot buffer zone. The staff confirmed that. The LCP policy 7.12 allows for residential use within a 30-foot buffer, but only if no feasible alternative exists. And according to CCC staff asked for justification, staff discusses encroachment and alternatives considered in Section B3B. I presume that they found that acceptable?
Yes, I'm not aware of any objection they have to the staff recommendation.
And the Coastal Commission staff agreed with the findings of the wetland report that the site does not support wetlands and requested any additional wetland analysis completed within 100 feet of the proposed development footprint. Staff discussed additional documents submitted, which were non-conclusive regarding wetlands. Can you expand on that?
Yes. So, you know, the wetlands have come up because there is the possibility that, of, you know, pockets of wet areas that are habitats in addition to the riparian habitats that exist. And the significant of that is twofold. Number one, the presence of a Number one, the presence of a wetland would also necessitate the need to confirm that the buffer is adequate in terms, there's a 100-foot buffer from the wetland. And it also relates to the appealability of the project to the Coastal Commission. I think you'll be hearing from the applicant regarding their position that the project should not be considered appealable to the Coastal Commission because they do not believe that there is a wetland within 100 feet. I think that should the project get appealed to the Coastal Commission, they'll have an opportunity to resolve that issue directly with the Coastal Commission. But from the county's review perspective, the really operable requirement is the 30-foot from the riparian vegetation, which the project has met.
Thank you.
Great. Supervisor Corso?
Thank you. So being that one of the commissioners who voted no on this was from my district, I just want folks to know that former Planning Commissioner Hanson is living his best life, out exploring the world now, on vacation. Actually, not just vacation, it's his life now. But he did not reach out to me with any concerns about this project, and so if he had, I would have had more context about why he voted no. But being that he didn't, I'm going to assume that it wasn't at the top of his priority list. And so, I feel good about approving this project and having it move forward, being that, in addition to the Planning Commission, the County Geotechnical Section, the County Drainage Section, the County Department of Public Works, the Granada Community Service District, the Coastside County Water District, the Coastside Fire Protection District, the MidCoast Council, and the California Coastal Commission all reviewed this, and it has passed through those agencies. And here we are. So I feel comfortable moving forward.
We have to open the public comment?
Oh, I see. Apologize.
So, why don't we do that? So with unanimous consent, we'll now open the public hearing. We have unanimous consent.
Yes.
The public hearing is now open. Could I ask the clerk to please see if anyone wishes to be heard?
Sure, Mr. President. We do have speaker slips in chambers, but I believe we also have the appellant and their representatives here as well.
Right. We would normally start with the appellant, and, you know, it's obviously the prerogative of the president, but we normally afford the appellant a little more time, typically maybe 10 minutes to present, and then maybe five minutes for rebuttal, if that's a...
Yeah. So please note, thank you. Please note that the attorney for the applicant has requested 15 minutes. We're going to grant that to present to the board, including any rebuttal. So if we can start them on the timer when they're here, we're going to give them 15 minutes.
Sure, Mr. President. Would you like to give them 15 minutes upfront, or split it for the rebuttal, maybe five at the end?
We'll do 10 minutes, and then we'll do five minutes for the rebuttal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisors. My name is Peter Prowse. I'm an attorney with the law firm Briscoe, Prowse, Cow, Ivester &amp; Basil in San Francisco. I'd like to thank all of you for your attention to this matter, and for staff for their recommendation for Mr. Nebelen, and also like to thank him for his service and for the service of the other veterans and their families. I'm here representing the appellant, the applicant, Ms. Lucacia. This has been a 20-year odyssey for her to get to this point. She's hopeful that this matter can finally be resolved today. We recognize that your agenda is filled with items that took a long, you know, time to get here, and so we appreciate your attention to this matter, which is important to us. I'm here with our project team, the architect Jason Silva, the biologists Robert Pereira and Patrick Carverness, as well as Ms. Lucacia. Patrick was also the biologist for the permitting of the house next door at 771 San Carlos, which in the late 1990s was granted a reduced 20-foot riparian buffer. Generally, we support this staff recommendation with three caveats. The first is that we would ask that you add a finding that this project is not appealable to the Coastal Commission. The staff report asserts that this project is appealable to the Coastal Commission because we cannot definitively prove that there are not wetlands within 100 feet of this project on a neighboring property. But that's not the standard. A project is not appealable unless there's a positive finding that there actually are wetlands within 100 feet, and you can't make a positive finding of wetlands here on the basis of the evidence before you. We don't own that neighboring property, and it's completely overgrown and impassable, making it very difficult, if not impossible, to take actual samples there. But what we have done is have a biologist review all the available data and develop his professional opinion that there likely are not wetlands within 100 feet. Mr. Pereira will speak to that issue. The only substantial evidence before you is his expert opinion that there likely are not wetlands there. That would be good enough in court, and it should be good enough here. Please don't put us through the time and expense of an appeal to the Coastal Commission because of unfounded speculation about wetlands that has no basis in the evidence. The second issue that we have is the suggestion, it's not a recommendation by staff, but a suggestion that you could condition this approval on removing the cantilevering component of this project. We don't believe that there's any good reason to exercise your discretion to do that. It would significantly impact this project, and our architect, Mr. Silva, will address that in his remarks. The third issue that we had is a request that you remove the deed restriction that would prohibit future development on this property. That's condition number 91. There's just no reason for that. It's not a standard in this neighborhood and something that's been required of neighboring projects. So with that, let me turn it over to our architect with the remark, or the request that, or the observation that the county has better things to spend seven figures on than buying Ms. Lucacia's property in a takings case. And we encourage you to approve this project so that we can all move forward.
Can you stop the timer? Supervisor Spear?
There's already an ADU plan for this property. In addition to the 1,600 square feet, there's a 708 square foot ADU. Why, what more would you put on this piece of property?
There are no plans for, to put anything further on this property. We just view a deed restriction as essentially just unnecessary. It's not been required elsewhere, and there's really no basis to restrict the property. I don't know what the LCP is going to look like in your future, whether, you know, ADU policy is changing, SB 9 policy is changing. We just don't know. But there's not a compelling reason to prohibit the, for all time, any future development on the rest of this property. It's unlikely, but...
Yeah. I don't know that I agree with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the clerk, I see six minutes and 55 seconds. We'll begin with your next speaker. Let the clock begin.
Good morning. Thank you. Good to see the supervisors today. First time standing in front of you, a little nervous, but thank you for hearing me out. We don't have much time, so I just want to share quickly, there was two reasons why they denied it, or we lost two votes from the commissioners, Commissioner Gupta and Hanson. And the two reasons was the front encroachment and the size of the ADU. I don't know if we have the slide today? No?
I can pull that up, and I'll just keep the time.
But I was going to, we have roughly 20 properties that were allowed the encroachment about three feet, plus or minus, within the area. Seven of the homes that are immediately adjacent to this property, there we go. If you look at the homes there, the five homes, five of which were granted encroachments, four of which were front encroachments, and one was a rear encroachment, and that was just so that they could financially have a better opportunity to build in that area because of the slope of the properties. So that's one. And number two was the height. If you can see here, there's the height of one home there. You can see some of the parking. That's a three-foot, that's a three-foot encroachment. That's about a seven-foot encroachment. There's another three-foot, and it keeps going, it keeps going, it keeps going, it keeps going, just like the clock's ticking. There's tons of them. And here, we have one right down the street. It's actually taller than our building from the front, and it actually is only three-foot back, it's the garage, it has an encroachment there that's within the three-foot. And you can also see the front yard goes out into the right-of-way, taking up parking. This is literally right across the street. So what happens here is we've got five residences that are in close proximity to her home that all have encroachments. We're like, going to be one of, you know, we're just asking for encroachment also, it's very similar encroachment. The only thing is, we have a very special circumstance. We're trying to save the riparian. These other homes are just trying to save money. So I think it's important to keep that in mind. We're doing our very best to serve the environment at the same time, get at least some sort of an envelope, which is only about 831 square feet of the whole lot that we're going to be building on the surface. The last thing I want to mention is regarding the cantilevers. We have cantilevers that were permitted in other homes. There were other homes in the area that only had 20-foot setbacks, and they had cantilevers, they had decks actually built within the setbacks. As a matter of fact, the adjacent neighbor tore down a structure, rebuilt the structure. I believe within the 20-foot setback, or at least at the 20-foot setback, we're being held to a 30-foot setback. So having those cantilevers are important for a couple of reasons. Number one is, it's, in California, a deck is considered an egress component as part of an exit system, especially in hard-to-reach downsloping lots in wildland urban interface zones. I think the owner's safety should be considered here, especially if there's occupants that are handicapped and need to get access to the deck so that the firemen can get to them. That's one reason. The other thing I wanted to clear up is that there was question regarding a post that was used for the cantilever. It's an eight-inch by eight-inch post that would go down from the two decks above and land within the 30-foot setback. We removed that post. We're going to do a structural steel column there, and that column is going to cantilever out and carry the load. It's a very expensive column, but we're doing that to try to help everybody's concerns. With that, I wanted to mention regarding the riparian, there's no wetlands, there's no evidence of wetlands. It's something that was brought up within the last couple of years.
Two minutes.
And with that, I'd like Robert to share.
How much time is remaining?
About two. Let me just check. Can you please proceed?
My name's Robert Pereira. I'm a wetland regulatory scientist with the Hupp &amp; Broadway Group. I was hired by the applicant to conduct a detailed wetland delineation on the property. Real quickly, because we don't have a lot of time to get into weeds of the report, my report concluded that there were no wetlands supported within the property boundary. Presented that to the staff, staff reviewed it, and I believe they agreed with the findings that there are no wetlands within the property boundary. Staff then asked us to look 100 feet beyond, or look beyond the property, but within 100 feet of the building footprint. So again, all those properties are private property, so we can't physically access them. Many of the properties are owned by people who are opposed to the project, so it would be impossible to access those projects or those properties. So we used all the available data we had to make a determination, a site-specific analysis, would areas outside the property boundary, within 100-foot boundary of the property, support wetlands? And all of our data pointed to the fact that definitively, it was unlikely that areas outside the property boundary, within that 100-foot boundary, could support wetlands. So there were actually two reports prepared. I prepared a report for the actual property, and we did a site-specific report for the areas outside the property boundary, and that was prepared by Patrick from Coastside Ecology. And for that, I'll hand it over to Elizabeth.
Good morning, Board of Supervisor members. Appreciate you, and thank you for your, thank you for your time and your interest. I'd like to give you my perspective, and I'd also want to thank San Mateo Planning Department. My name is Elizabeth Lacassia.
Can you identify yourself for the record?
Pardon?
Can you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, I was just going to, I'm sorry. My name is Elizabeth Lacassia. My husband Rod Lacassia and I purchased this parcel over 20 years ago in 2005. Rod wanted to design our home and live on the coast because he lived to sail. I'm here today to ask for your support for this project. We have submitted four separate project development plans to San Mateo Planning Department since its purchase, two of which had been approved and then later overturned. Each design has been smaller than the last. Planning Department has reduced our visible footprint over the 20 years since we purchased this parcel. For many years, we had, we were granted the 20-foot setback, then recently revised to a 25-foot setback. Currently in the midst of planning review, prior to CDRC review, we are now required to adhere to a 30-foot riparian setback on the vague premise there might be a wetland somewhere near my property. May I continue? Thank you. Other comparable structures have been granted a 20-foot riparian setback variance, including the neighboring property 771 San Carlos Avenue owned by the clients, which includes a cantilevered structure and a 2017 revised deck. The current structure and its design have been extremely restricted, more so than any other comparable home or project in the area. The structure's residential footprint is only 764 square feet. The square footage of my living space is 1,682 compared to 2,675 square feet, the average of four comparable surrounding structures. Over 20 years of environmental studies validate my parcel as riparian status, and it is highly unlikely wetland exists at two and beyond the required max of 100-foot zone buffer. There is no substantial evidence of any wetland within 100 feet, and so the absence of evidence of wetlands cannot be used as a justification to place additional restrictions on this property, such as opening it up to further appeal, excuse me, to the Coastal Commission. Please put this unlikely concern to rest. I ask you to honor my rights as a property owner. I ask you to grant me the same consideration regarding a routine front setback variant, establish my standard 20-foot riparian setback variance, as has been enjoyed by my neighbors, as well as the approvals of recent comparable projects. Thank you. I greatly appreciate your consideration, and I'm grateful for Planning's recommendation. Please approve my project. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other speakers relative to this project?
We do have public comment, Mr. President. So I'll go ahead and start with comments from chambers. We have four speakers at this time. We'll go to David Allen, followed by Peter Doug. Actually, this might be the group's speaker slip. I'll put that aside. So David Allen, followed by Kathleen Klein.
Hi, my name is David Allen. I'm the across-the-street neighbor from the proposed property. So there are a couple of things that I want to point out, and I think some of the other speakers will also offer a perspective. But the main thing that we wanted to point out is that the street is not a county-maintained street, and it's narrow and actually kind of irregular. And at the place where they're requesting the three-foot variance of their driveway, the street width is only 25 feet. Once a car is parked in that area, it's impossible for a fire truck to get through. So this is one of the main reasons that the two Planning Commission members voted against is the three-foot variance, once you look at the actual layout of the street. And the variances, the montage here of the other three-foot variances on other streets, which are a normal width, that's no problem. Here, we feel it's a big problem. The question was also mentioned about the fire hydrant. It is three feet and one inch from the driveway, three feet is the requirement, and three feet and one inch from the building, from the structure. It's the fire hydrants in the very corner of the property. So once there are cars parked there, okay, once there are cars parked there, then it's impractical for anyone to get by. So that's the main reason. The main thing that I wanted to point out is that the three-foot variance is critical because the street is under width. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll now go to Kathleen Klein, followed by Richard Klein.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kathy Klein, and I live at 771 San Carlos Avenue.
Ms. Klein, can I ask you to put your microphone down just a little bit? Thank you.
I'm Kathy Klein, and I live at 771 San Carlos Avenue, next door to the Lacassia lot. And much of the concerns have been submitted in writing about the water and et cetera on the lot. But I'm here, I'm concerned about the loss of the fire lane slash emergency turnaround that is in front of the Lacassia lot. When emergency vehicles respond to 911 calls, there is a fire truck that also arrives with other medical vehicles. Without the turnaround, the fire truck must back down the street slowly, backwards, slowing any rescue to get to a hospital. We actually experienced this a few years ago when we called 911 after a guest collapsed in our home. Fortunately, he was okay. Medics arrived first, and then the fire truck followed. The medics and the ambulance... The medics and the ambulances somehow blocked the way to the, for the fire truck to get to the turnaround, and the fire truck blocked the medics from exiting because it was going forward and it couldn't turn around. The fire truck, fire truck was forced to back slowly down San Carlos, and had this been an actual emergency, that crucial time would have been added to the rescue. The second concern is the issue of the fire insurance. With the elimination of the fire lane slash emergency turnaround on our dead-end street, we are concerned about the continuing insurability of our properties. Please deny the application. Thank you.
And Richard Klein.
Yeah, hi, I'm Rich Klein, next-door neighbor at 771 San Carlos. Long before we moved to El Granada 15 years ago, long before the Lacassias bought the neighboring lot, and long before most of you were on the board, the County of San Mateo created the Montecito Riparian Zone to protect this important watershed and wildlife corridor. It requires 50-foot buffers from riparian vegetation like the arroyo willow with a 30-foot hardship fallback. When the Lacassias bought their property, it had recently been cleared illegally. The county deferred development, pending replanning, and denied the application. Maps at the time attempted to estimate the previous extent of riparian vegetation. The great news is that the replanning worked, and much of the lot is now covered with healthy willow cover. In the front of the lot, only five to 10 feet remain outside the buffers, and the back is completely covered. This is obvious from the street and from our kitchen. The old maps apparently underestimated the actual extent of riparian vegetation. My written comments provide photos to make this clear. When we had to repair our deck, and this was referred to several times before, the county was clear to us that no expansion was allowed since the 50-foot buffer applied to us. Please continue to enforce the important protections you enacted long ago. Even with 30-foot buffers, only a tiny house is buildable on this property. Please deny this application, and thank you all, and thank you to the Planning Commission for doing what you do. Your patience is really appreciated.
Thank you. We'll now turn to comments from Zoom. At this time, we do have four hands raised, Mr. President, and I can make a last call after the first speaker. We'll go with Sid Young, and then we'll go with Tad. Sid, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I've been to 771 San Carlos, and actually so has Ray Mueller and Mike Callagie, because we held a meeting there asking what the county does for the mid-coast long ago, maybe three years ago, right after Ray was elected. And it is definitely in the Montecito riparian habitat, per your first map that you showed. In fact, the parcel in question, it looks like it's almost all in the riparian corridor. So they're prevaricating when they say there isn't any existence of any riparian wetlands. There's willows there, and they're blocking the fire lane. There's a sign that shows there's a fire lane there. You can see the fire hydrant. There's not going to be any turnaround in that spot, and it's an unfounded suggestion? No, it is definitely in the riparian areas. So I sold the house further down on Montecito, and it was actually built over a raised foundation so the Montecito flow could go underneath it. I think if they were allowed to build here, they were really going to be sorry, and I think the county should at least consider making that road county improved so that it's not a dead-end street with a impaired fire turnaround. Thank you.
Thank you, Sid. At this time, I'll make a final call to raise your hand for public comment on this item. Okay, final call has been made for item number six, and our last four speakers will be Tad, Susanna Van Buzen, Bruce, and Lenny Roberts. Tad, please unmute and begin.
Okay, well, all people by nature, free and independent, have the right to protecting their property. These people can do whatever they want with their property. You are over-regulating these people. It's obvious that you don't know that Chevron deference was overturned 10 months ago. This is a clear private rights violation. If you don't let them and allow them immediately to build on their property after playing your tic-tac little games, they have a federal action against you. And I can tell the other speakers, NIMBY, not in my backyard. What a bunch of crap. Change your titles, everybody in the county, to a lodial titles. This is absolutely, you, you are warring against we, the people, and we are going to push back. You have been put on notice. You've sworn an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States. These people should take you to federal court and call you a RICO Act against them. This is ridiculous.
Thank you. We'll now go to our next speaker, Susanna Van Buzen, followed by Bruce. Susanna, please unmute and begin. Susanna, if you're on? I'll come back to you. Okay, we'll start with, I think you're unmuted at this time.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
My name is Susanna Van Buzen. I live at 730 San Carlos. I've lived there for 35 years. I really want to, I realize there have been biologists checking the property. I don't understand their results because in the time I've lived here, I've seen water flooding Balboa Avenue to the south, just, not just below that lot that's in question, but also beneath the Klein's house, the neighbor's lot, that, that foundation was flooded when they built that house. The water flows down the hill onto, onto Balboa every, it, the culvert isn't enough to carry it in the winter when it's wet. Right now, the, the water in the culvert is low, although it is a year-long creek. There is water there now. I don't understand why it's declared not a year-long creek. It flows down the culvert to the harbor beach, on a small harbor beach near Barbara's Fish Trap. It's indicated on geographical survey maps and on GPS. There are undeveloped lots all through that area covered by the arroyo willows. The roots are clearly nourished by the wetlands associated with the creek, otherwise they wouldn't be there. The area is home to garter snakes, red lake frogs, wood rats, buckcats, coyotes, raccoons, and occasionally we see mountain lions. It's a protected area. The applicant, Mrs. Lacassia, needs to reduce the size of her house and ADU to be in compliance with the Coastal Act and the Coastal Plan. The reason for that buffer is when building, the damage stretches out sometimes.
If we can wrap up.
A field of feet from the building that's going on. One additional comment I want to add, the county would do well to consider requiring a disclosure upon the sales.
Susanna, that was your time. Mr. President had called your time. If you can just make your last five seconds, please.
Oh, okay. A disclosure would save a lot of money, expands time and aggravation on a part of people like the Lacassias, who probably didn't know this. Mr. Roy, the seller, did know it 40 years ago.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll now go to Bruce, followed by Lenore Roberts. Bruce, please unmute and begin.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd just like to make a mention here, maximum law, the owner of a piece of land owns everything above and below it to an indefinite extent. You can look that up. If you guys continue to play circus games with the people that own this lot and tell your neighbors respectfully, I don't know if anybody's ever thought about this, but you know, when, when you have willow trees, they don't always grow in water-saturated ground. Willow trees will grow outside of that, and where there's one willow tree and a bird happens to carry things up, another willow tree will grow. You know, when it rains and the seeds drop from that willow tree, they'll go downstream, and they'll populate even more, and it has nothing to do with water. So you know, that's silly nonsense that you're talking about. Thank you for letting me speak, and have a great day.
Thank you. And we'll go to our last speaker, Lenore Roberts. Please unmute and begin.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Supervisor Kanepa, President Kanepa, and members of the board. On behalf of Green Foothills, I request that you deny the appeal before you. We believe that Mrs. Lacassia has a reasonable and feasible alternative of reducing the footprint and square footage of the proposed project to better comply with the required riparian and wetland setbacks, as well as reduce the project's 85% intrusion into the front setback. The, regarding the applicant's and appellant's contention that the property is not within 100 feet of a stream or wetland and therefore is not appealable to the Coastal Commission, there are, I provided in a letter to you citations from four different properties where independent biologists who were not hired by the applicant or appellant have determined that arroyo willow is both a riparian and a wetland species along the San Mateo coast, which I provided more details, and therefore the project is appealable to the Coastal Commission. We would support approval of a modest house or cabin that better fits the site, given the constraints as outlined in the letter from Rich and Kathy Klein, neighbors at 771 San Carlos. Thank you for consideration of our comments.
Thank you. That ends public comment, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. My understanding is we have a rebuttal for, for five minutes. Why don't we start that?
Thank you, thank you. So what I first wanted to talk about is we only are allowed 800 square feet. We can't shrink the property down anymore. We can't build a home on less, less than eight, more, you know, less than 800 square feet. So I just want to make that known. We're on the top corner. We're squeezed into a corner. We've got 30-foot buffers from the riparian, more, more than our neighbors. But I wanted to mention this. The fire also supported the encroachment, including public works. Planning believes and has observed and thus determined the applicant has done everything possible to maximize the distance from the riparian corridor and the projection of any potential impact to non-established wetlands. So in the, in the report, it says that we've met all the fire requirements for turnaround. And if there's any more questions on that, we could, we could refer to the Fire Department, but that's their jurisdiction. If there wasn't adequate fire turnaround for them, they would have declined the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisors. My name is Patrick Coburnus. I've been a biologist on this project since, it was 2008. I've been a biologist on the coast side for over 30 years. This site is located in an upland. I've been there many times. I've documented the vegetation there. Two-thirds of the property approximately is upland. There is riparian vegetation to the west. I've crawled through that riparian corridor. I've mapped the creek. The creek is over 100 feet, 114 feet from the property boundary on the east side, on the, would be the northeast side. This is a riparian woodland. It's a stream-side forest that comes up on about a third of the property. And, you know, I, I think that, you know, reasonably that they can build a modest house there. It's, it's, it's not an issue with impacting the riparian corridor, as long as they use suitable erosion control methods. And I also just wanted to say that I, I did the biological assessment for a number of properties in that area, including the next-door neighbor, and most of them were granted a 20-foot buffer from the riparian. There was no specter of wetlands raised, you know, on adjacent properties or on the property. But I feel like, you know, we've done many, many biological studies on this property, and I think all the evidence is there to support the project. Thank you.
Just going to expand on that a little bit and focus on this plant that keeps coming up, the arroyo willow. So there's this idea out there that arroyo willows are only found in wetlands, which is not true. Plants are rated by the National Wetland Plant Indicator Rating System, which the federal government puts out and most people recognize. So arroyo willows are rated as facultative wet, and so what does that mean? That means that they usually grow or occur in wetlands, but may also occur in non-wetlands. And so how do you determine if they're occurring in non-wetlands? You do a wetland delineation study on the property. You look at the soils, you look at the hydrology, you look at other plants that are growing in the area. You make that determination based on that data. And so our report showed that, yes, there are arroyo willows out there, and, but those arroyo willows are grown in non-wetlands or upland areas. And so this idea that just because it's an arroyo willow, it has to be a wetland is just not factual.
We'll just close by thanking you again for your time and attention to this matter, and we ask for your support for the staff recommendation with the suggestion that you add a finding that this project is not appealable to the Coastal Commission because there is no substantial evidence that there are wetlands within 100 feet. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you to the public. If that's all the speakers, I would now ask for unanimous consent to close the public hearing.
Yes.
The public hearing is closed. Are there any other comments or questions from my colleagues? Staff is asking that we grant the appeal, but offers other alternatives. Did one of my colleagues wish to make a motion to approve stack recommendation in its entirety, granting the appeal and taking all the actions set forth in the memorandum and supporting documents? If so, I don't know if there's any additional comments.
I have some.
Yes.
Thank you. I want to thank Director Monowitz and planning staff for their diligent work on this project, and I understand that it is a complex project, and I do see that it's been reviewed by at least, and likely more, eight agencies. I, I'm clear on, you know, my stance and will be supporting approval of this project. And I want to take a moment to just name that it's, it's really unfortunate when we have these kinds of situations before us because you have neighbors who have concerns about, you know, the wildlife and the, the riparian corridor, and, and that's valid. But I actually took a moment to look at a Google, the Google map, and like really zoom out to look at the broader context of this, of this potential project, and I was, I'm kind of baffled by the fact that there, like, there is house, house, there are housing, there's house, la, 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 la. There are homes all around this area. In fact, the one directly behind it on Balboa Avenue, or Av Balboa, it's actually like past the, the property line of, it goes into that exact space that, that many neighbors are concerned with. And when I look at the, the first slide that the appellant submitted, this home is so tiny in, the footprint is so tiny compared to all of the neighboring homes. And I just, I just really question, you know, why, why folks would be so opposed when knowing that their homes are much larger, had much bigger footprints, and, you know, the, the home, that 770 San Carlos Avenue, goes further into that, what, what would be considered that corridor? So I, I'm just wondering how we got to this place, and it honestly feels a little disappointing to me at least, that we have neighbors in this community who have organized against a new potential neighbor who has been wanting to build their home for over 20 years, and, you know, we have the same biologist who worked on many of the other properties. And I just really wonder how it is that we got here. And I just really wonder how it is that we got here. And I would just ask that, you know, we will see how this vote goes right now, but I would ask that neighbors that have opposed this to really reflect on, you know, the same, the same motivations that you had for wanting a home here and being so close to that corridor and respecting nature and wanting to have a forever home is the same thing that your new neighbor wants? So I would just hope that, again, no matter what happens with this vote, that you all could try to come together at some point and be welcoming to your new potential neighbor. Again, this footprint of this home is tiny in comparison to the neighboring ones. And the setback, I think, is appropriate. I see it go further back than the other properties directly next to it, the three other properties, actually at least two. Let me correct that. And lastly, I will say that if there is a deed restriction, I would not support that. I don't think this property and this home, future homeowner should be treated differently than all of the neighbors. I think we should be fair about, about this. And I'm frankly sorry that we got to this point, that there had to be an appeal filed. I'm going to support staff's direction and I would encourage my colleagues to also look at the larger context of this area and recognize that, you know, and actually, in fact, the home directly behind it has like, just like plain grass that they've built into the riparian corridor potentially. And I, so that's confusing to me. And why is it okay for there to be just plain grass and cement, but not a home where there's very obviously room? So, thank you.
Great. I have a couple of questions of staff. Can you, you know, we had a letter sent to us by Green Foothills. Can you speak to that letter from a staff perspective? I mean, obviously, there's, you know, they're stating that there's, you know, environmental concerns about this, you know, riparian corridor. Where does staff differ from that letter? I'm just curious.
Yes, thank you President Canepa. So, you know, I think Green Foothills raises legitimate concerns about the protection of sensitive habitat areas. Staff really seeks to achieve an appropriate balance between our obligation to protect sensitive habitats and also our obligation to enable a private property owner to make reasonable use of their site. So, we believe the staff recommendation reflects that appropriate balance. Apparently, Green Foothills believes that the development should be subject to further restriction and further reduction in footprint, which from the staff's perspective, we believe would not afford the property owner a reasonable use of their home.
And so, they had talked about, she had talked about in the letter, about it looking at a potential reduction in the housing, correct?
Yes, I think they are suggesting that the footprint of the home be reduced even further. And as you heard from the project designer, they do not believe that would be feasible.
So there's no way that, and I want to make sure I'm understanding you, there's no way to reduce the footprint, there's no way to reduce the housing? Is that correct?
Well, certainly, it would be, you know, feasible to build a smaller cabin, as Green Foothills suggests, but that is not the desire of the current applicant and nor do I believe our regulations give us the authority to require them to build a small cabin. I think our obligation is to enable them to build something that is proportional to what other people in the neighborhood have been able to build.
Yeah, but they could resubmit plans though, I would assume, right? If they wanted to?
Yes.
Okay. My other question to you is around this issue. The project applicant talked about appeal. They didn't want the appeal before the coastal commission. Is this action we're taking today granting them that authority?
So, planning and building staff has consistently noticed this project as being appealable to the Coastal Commission, given the potential presence of wetlands within 100 feet of the property. The applicant and her representatives have had an opportunity to object and to request that their dispute over that determination be acted upon by the Coastal Commission. Within the Coastal Commission's regulation, there is a procedure called dispute resolution in the instance where a local government determines that a project is not appealable or appealable. If an applicant or interested party objects to that determination, then we report that objection to the Coastal Commission and they would make a definitive determination about that. The way the appeal process works is that if the county approves the project and the approval is appealed to the Coastal Commission, the commission uses a two-step process. The first step is to determine whether or not the appeal raises a substantial issue. If they determine it does not, the local decision stands. If they determine there is a substantial issue, then they take jurisdiction over the application and they act on it de novo, as if it hadn't been approved by the county. So, based on our collaboration with the commission staff to date, our understanding is the staff thinks we have processed this appropriately. And I would expect that, should an appeal brought forward to the Coastal Commission, that it's very likely that the staff would recommend that the appeal does not raise a substantial issue. And once again, the applicant and her representatives would have a chance, if the project were to be appealed to the Coastal Commission, to ask the Coastal Commission to rule on whether or not it truly is within their appeals jurisdiction. So I don't see any reason at this point for the county to change its perspective that the project is appealable, given the fact that the applicant has other avenues to challenge that determination.
Thank you. Supervisor Spear.
Thank you. Have we ever, in similar appeals, found that this was not appealable to the Coastal Commission?
Well, you know, determining appealability to the Coastal Commission is something we do every day in response to every application that comes in. So, once we take in an application, we have to determine, is it within the appeals jurisdiction? Because that will then determine the processing requirements.
My question though is, have we ever taken action on an appeal where we made a finding that it was not appealable to the Coastal Commission?
I am not aware of us ever taking an action to change our perspective on the appealability to the Coastal Commission.
Okay, and then the issue about access for fire equipment. Could you clarify, that has been reviewed by the local fire authority and found to be acceptable?
Yes, that's correct. Coastside Fire Protection District reviewed the project and they recommended conditional approval. Condition 43 identifies the need for the applicant to work with the fire district during the building permit stage of the project to ensure that sufficient access will be maintained to the project site.
All right. Thank you.
All right. No questions? What's the board's desire?
I'd love, I'd, I'd love, I would like to motion to approve the appeal, excluding the deed restriction.
Through the chair, if I may comment on that. So, it is typical when we see a development proposal on a site where we have determined there's sensitive habitat on that site to require that the development be accompanied by a deed restriction. And the purpose of that is twofold. Number one, to make sure that the development doesn't encroach into the sensitive habitat in the future. And secondly, to inform future purchasers of the property that there is this sensitive area within which you are not allowed to build. And that's pursuant to the regulations of our local coastal program.
I'd like to ask a clarifying question then. Does 854 Balboa Avenue have a deed restriction? Does 770 San Carlos Avenue have a deed restriction? Does 155 Escalona Avenue have a deed restriction?
Not to my knowledge. And the reason for that is that most of the homes that you're speaking of were built decades ago. Our practice for reviewing and approving projects that are adjacent to sensitive habitat area has become more onerous and includes additional protections. So, it is true that there are other projects in the neighborhood that were built without this requirement. But it's also true that any project that would be proposed now into the future would be subject to such a requirement.
So, but there's no ability to go to those property owners now and restrict those deeds? It can only happen during a sale? Can you clarify that?
Yes, so our action on a discretionary permit provides us with an opportunity to attach conditions of approval. So at the time of the development, the decision-making body has the opportunity to attach such conditions. It would, you don't have the opportunity once the approval is granted.
Okay, I'm gonna, I would like to stick with my motion and see if, see how my colleagues feel about that. If not, I'm happy to make a different motion.
Mr. President, can I just add one additional thing? And I'll actually ask the planning director to confirm or clarify this one way or the other. The deed restriction would be a property interest, of course, and it's one that could be abandoned or disclaimed in the future if the circumstances ever changed in such a way that the actual underlying reason for the deed restriction was to change or to go away. I mean, as the planning director had noted, the deed restriction is something that our LCP seeks, but we, it's, and it's to protect the habitat, et cetera. But if circumstances down the road were to change in such a way that Mr. Prowse was kind of suggesting, could happen 50 years in the future, 100 years in the future. It is an interest that the county could consider abandoning if the property owner were to come and make that kind of a request in the future.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a substitute motion, please. I'd like to move the recommendation by the staff.
Second.
Okay. You want to withdraw your?
Yeah, I feel like I have to, so I will withdraw it.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. Have a roll call, please.
Sure. Substitute motion by Supervisor Spear, seconded by Supervisor Gochet. Roll call. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Item seven is a resolution affirming the county of San Mateo's commitment to preventing teen dating violence and supporting education programs and services to provide resources to youth on teen dating violence. I brought the support issue to the board via our youth commission. I'm proud to bring forward this resolution, recognizing the urgent need to prevent teen dating violence in San Mateo County. One in three teens in the U.S. experiences physical, sexual or emotional abuse from a dating partner. Nearly half report that it happened at school. These experiences can have serious lasting impacts on their mental health, safety and academic success. Many teens suffer in silence. In fact, over 75% of teens in abusive relationships never tell anyone. That's why early education and open conversations are so important. Teaching young people about healthy relationships, consent and boundaries can make a real difference. This resolution supports integrating prevention education into youth programs and school curricula. It also encourages collaboration between schools, mental health professionals and survivor advocates. All young people deserve safe, healthy and supportive relationships. Preventing teen dating violence is a shared responsibility and it starts with awareness, compassion and action. Today, through via video, we have a speaker from the San Mateo County Youth Commission, Shreya Malhotra. Make some comments. She recorded via video. Thank you.
Good morning, honorable members of the board. My name is Shreya Malhotra and I'm here to speak in favor of the teen dating violence resolution. Last year, I was part of the Community Equity Subcommittee, which was dedicated to advocating for important lesser-known issues. We believed that teen dating violence was one of these issues and decided to raise awareness to this issue by creating a resolution. Teen dating violence is harmful for many reasons beyond the obvious. It impacts one's ability to thrive in social and academic settings. It has significant emotional tolls and results in youth being more likely to suffer from depression or anxiety. These are only a few of the harms of teen dating violence. We detail them more thoroughly in the resolution. Because of the widespread nature of this issue and its importance to youth in San Mateo County, I strongly urge the board to vote in favor of passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll bring it back to the board. I don't know if there are any comments. Yes, Supervisor Spear.
It's a profound issue. I think we should pass the resolution, but I think more importantly, we should engage in the education in our schools about dating violence.
Great. Yes, Supervisor Corzo.
Oh, I think Supervisor Gochet.
I was just going to say, I agree and thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you.
I really appreciate our youth commission and President Canepa for bringing this forward to the board. I want to make sure that we are aware that Cora does have a program to support youth engagement. It's called the YEAH program, Youth Engagement and Advocacy Program. And they actually partner with middle schools and high schools to give presentations, workshops and tools on healthy relationships and how to get help if they find themselves in an abusive relationship. And we've heard from the Cora staff before, who run this program, about how they actually have young people come to them after their presentation and say, you know, I didn't know that I was in an abusive relationship or a controlling one. And so it's really a meaningful program. And schools that haven't had the program reach their sites can reach out to Cora for information. And I also want to make sure that we recognize that Chief Keen, our chief probation officer, did connect with Cora to ensure that our youth services center would, in previous years, had received that same YEAH programming, but it had stopped for several years. And so I was able to encourage them to connect with Cora. And so that program is being implemented again in the youth services center and that's a population that very much needs it. Because we know that 30% of incarcerated youth have experienced multiple adverse childhood experiences, including child abuse and family violence. And so I would encourage us as a board to continue to support these programs and be aware of them and encourage our schools to connect with them. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any public comment?
Sure, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker cards in chambers, so we'll turn to public comment on Zoom at this time. We're on item number seven for teen dating violence. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. And I just really want to thank our youth commission. And I think there is some great feedback from my colleagues. I mean, I think there's so many programs sometimes, but some sort of collaboration, maybe that group, is it YEAH?
Yeah.
Yeah, can really come before the youth commission? Because there's such a lot of, what I've seen in the county, we have so much work going on, that's profound work. But it's just trying to connect the dots. And so what I'll do is I'll go through our office, I'll work through your office. And maybe what we can do is have this group speak before the commission. I think that would be extraordinarily helpful. So, with that, I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you so much. Item eight is a second resolution I'm bringing forward, declaring suicide among men and boys, a public health crisis in San Mateo County. This is brought before us, as you, many of you know, expressing support of the governor's executive order N-31-25. I'm proud to sponsor this resolution. I'm proud to sponsor this resolution that addresses a critical public health crisis, and that is suicide among men and boys. Suicide is a leading cause of death in our country. And this statistic will floor you. Men account for nearly 80% of all suicides. Tragically, young men are three times more likely to die by suicide than young women. These statistics represent real people in our community, that are fathers, sons, brothers, and friends. The factors behind these alarming numbers include depression, social isolation, substance abuse, and perhaps most significantly, the stigma surrounding mental health. Loneliness. Men and boys are often taught to hide their struggles, to be strong and self-reliant, which prevents them from seeking the help they desperately need. In response to this crisis, Governor Newsom issued executive order N-3-25 directing state agencies to address these mental health disparities and support men and boys. This resolution aligns with that call to action, and today, we are affirming our commitment to supporting these efforts. I'm urging our county departments, schools, and community partners to adopt gender-responsive mental health strategies, expand peer-based support models, and approve access to services for men and boys. We must also work to better understand the gaps in services and promote healthy, connected communities that encourage open dialogue and proactive mental health care. Together, we can reduce stigma, save lives, and ensure that no boy or man suffers in silence. Dr. J. Africa, our Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, will be making a brief comments. Dr. J.
Good morning again. Just wanted to thank you on behalf of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services for an appreciation for your leadership recognizing suicide among men and boys as a public health crisis. This declaration acknowledges both the loss experienced by community and our shared responsibility to act. Well, Supervisor Canepa talked about the data statewide. In San Mateo County, there's data that's showing a concerning trend. In 2020, and again in 2024, we saw the highest number of male suicide deaths in the past decade. Fifty-seven lives lost each of those years. Men aged 45 to 64 continue to represent the largest share of deaths, though we're seeing increases among younger men, 25 to 44, and older adults, 65 and over. While white men continue to make up the majority, suicides among Asian and Latino men have increased in the recent years. And the leading method has also shifted over time. In earlier years, firearm deaths were most common, but since 2020, hanging and suffocation have become the leading method, reflecting really an evolving risk that require tailored prevention approaches. So each of these data points represents someone who identifies as a son, a father, a grandfather, an uncle, a friend, or coworker that whose life was cut short. This is not only about suicide, this again is about isolation, diminished opportunity, and invisible suffering. So in alignment with that, BHRS will continue to focus on local service delivery, data analysis, and intervention. And as you know, we have a suicide, a countywide suicide prevention committee that will focus on culturally and gender-appropriate strategies and outreach. You know, we really can build a San Mateo where every man and boy knows that reaching out for help is a sign of strength and not shame. And Supervisor Corzo said, if anybody needs help, to call our crisis hotline, which is Thank you.
Dr. Africa, you know, your presentation raises for me a lot of issues. You know, the county spends a lot of its time and money providing services to those who are falling through the safety net. But there's a whole universe of others who aren't receiving those kinds of services but who need our help. And, I mean, I support this resolution, Mr. President, but, you know, resolutions don't do anything. It's what are we going to do as a community? Now, we do know that young boys are feeling less inclined to go to college, less inclined to go to graduate schools. The numbers have flipped now. In college graduates, now women are the highest percentage graduating from college and from professional schools. So there's a whole universe of kids, boys, who are struggling, and I don't know what we're doing for them. I don't think we're doing much unless they fall through the cracks or become suicidal or have a mental health issue. And I think we'd have to do more to reach out to the universe of boys in our county. And I would like for you to come up with some ideas that we can implement that will benefit all of the young boys in San Mateo County who may be struggling or may be contemplating or may just not be finding a pathway into their future. So it's one of the areas that I think we need to spend much more time on is providing the great talent we have within the county in terms of providing services to those most in need, but also expand that knowledge base to others, whether it's a conference on boys or going into the schools. I mean, I would love for you to come up with some ideas that you can share with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. I wasn't planning on speaking much to this item, but I feel moved to right now. So my brother actually passed away due to suicide when I was 16 years old, almost 20 years ago, and his birthday is actually this week. So this is an issue that really hits close to home for me. And I think it is one that the county has, through your leadership, Dr. J, very much uplifted and supported, and there definitely are ways that we can and should do more. But I don't think we should consider doing that without recognizing that we have to have partnerships with our county office of education, with our school districts. They are the ones that are closest to young people. They are the ones that can educate the folks that we're most concerned with here. And I do think that in the past 10 years, there's been a large movement to really uplift this issue, and I think it's our responsibility to really ask our partners, you know, what is already happening? What efforts can we support? How can we go further? And Dr. J, I know you have a lot on your plate already. There are a lot of needs right now, and behavioral health is dealing with, you know, the loss of funding for many of the agencies that we contract with who provide mental health and supportive services. And so there are initiatives that we can, you know, take up and improve on, but first we need to ground ourselves in understanding the landscape of what's already happening. One of the things that I'm exploring with the support of Dr. J and his team, as well as Parks Director Nick Calderon, is not something huge, but something I think every single one of our districts could do is to create a community space through a bench where families of folks who have lost loved ones to suicide or folks who are at risk and considering suicide can... So we want to create a bench that has hotline numbers for suicide prevention, where family members can go and be in a space with positive messaging for folks who are deep in that struggle. And just to, you know, kind of create some awareness, I do think that for families that have been impacted by these issues, there are always questions about what could I have done differently? What resource did I miss? And frankly, when my brother died, it was, you know, almost 20 years ago, and there were less resources, there was more stigma back then. But there are people that, and young men particularly, who are impacted by this and who are considering suicide, who have made up their mind, it won't tell a soul about what their decision has been made. And so while that is really sad, it is part of the reality of some suicides. Most people reach out for help, but some don't. So I'd just like to close by saying that I think this might be another issue that would be great for the youth commission to be aware of. There is help out there now, and, you know, one of the things I do with my son, who's 14, and to be even more vulnerable here, suicide actually is a generational issue in my family. And so I'm very concerned about my son and his mental health on a regular basis. And some folks don't want therapy. They don't want to be a part of a support group, and so all you can do is really let them know that there are resources and check in with people. And while the county should and will do more, it's also a community issue that every family and individual has the ability to be impactful on. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you, and to Supervisor Corzo, thank you for sharing that information, and we're thinking and praying for you. I know it has to be difficult to share this, but this is something that is important, and I agree that we can do more to help in this space. So, Canepa, if you're ready for...
Yeah, sure. You know, I just want to say something. You know, in the community I live in, you know, there are a lot of young people and a lot of issues, right? Some of them, they don't feel heard. A lot of them are looking for jobs. It's all sort of interconnected. And what I hear from them sometimes is that they feel alone, right? They don't, they don't feel heard. They don't feel there's anyone that can connect with them. And so one of the things I would say, I know in our office has really worked on this issue on loneliness. What we've done is we've done this loneliness to light, you know, just different venues, different events. But if we were able to extend, I think, you know, you're probably right, Supervisor Spear, I think like a conference, that's something I would be interested in working on. I think it's really important, it's critical. I think we have a generation, not my words, but their words, especially amongst young men, they feel like left behind. They really do. And so, you know, I'm committed to working with our community colleges. Sometimes we forget about our community colleges. I'm committed to working with our office, you know, our Office of Education. But one of the things that, you know, I want to challenge staff with is, you know, I don't know, I mean, we've been in concert, we've been working with the Newsom administration on this, as you've seen. You know, when we first declared loneliness a public health crisis here in San Mateo County, it was only a resolution. But that resolution has enabled us to work with the governor's volunteer corps. So I think the importance of a resolution is not the resolution itself, but it's the action that takes place thereafter. So what I would say is really, if you wouldn't mind, Dr. J, is really working with, in my office and myself in particular, seeing if there's anything that we can do to take from the state, especially this executive order that we might be able to look at in terms of executing. I think there's some really solid ideas. And then this number that just floors me is that 80% of suicide is men. I think as a society, we're failing. I mean, we are just failing to reach out to people. I think I'm committed through the work, through my staff, to make sure that we leave no one behind. And so I appreciate your effort. I know we've done some work. I think we're going to do some more work together, and I think it's going to be work that's going to be profound and impactful, and really, at the end of the day, save lives. Because right now, there are people, trust me, I mean, there are people that are hurting. I mean, there are just people who are hurting, and they need, they need resources. And so I'm committed to doing that. So with that, do we have public comment?
Yes, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, but I do have two speakers on Zoom. We'll go to Tad, followed by Martin Fox. Tad, please proceed.
Well, good afternoon. Another issue that Karen Spire has been involved in for 30 years in emasculating men. You can't expect men to grow up and be men if you take the man out of them through their schooling. You keep calling them boys. They're young men. Let's treat them like men. You took their sports away. You've taken their hobbies away. You've taken their ability to congregate and get to know each other better. You've done it all. So you're looking at, you're the results of your own policies and procedures, and you guys are gravitating towards the LGBTQ group. You should try to be creating families and people that want to get married and want to have more kids. Like you said earlier in another meeting, you have no kids replacing you. You have no tax base coming. You guys are out of control. Support the men in this community.
Thank you. This time, I'll make a last call for a public comment. Okay. Our last three speakers will be Martin Fox, Sabrina, and Bruce. Martin, please proceed.
Thank you very much for bringing this subject up. It's an old, old subject. Perhaps John Niblin can comment on it as well. When you serve during wartime especially, you learn this is a veteran's issue. You have tremendous resources available, both in Menlo Park for veterans, but most importantly, you have the opportunity to learn how the VA treats this issue. We have the largest mental health treatment facility in the United States for veterans that deals with this kind of issue every single day. So San Mateo County is already part of dealing with it, and it's a matter of recognizing the populations that are dealing with it and the resources you have immediately available to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. We'll now go to Sabrina, followed by Bruce. Sabrina, please proceed.
Hi, this is Sabrina. I continue to see you watch and violate your oath of office and also the 14th Amendment for equal application of laws. This goes right to the heart of males committing suicide. You have disenfranchised them. You have regulated so that they are at the bottom of the barrel. I know this because I have a son, I have his friends, I've had friends that have committed suicide in family members as well. But you haven't clearly read your Constitution or your Bible, Supervisor Corzo, because you would understand that these are all related, and there are no safe spaces. There's only law that is by God and enshrined in our Constitution. The Bible is a part of the Constitution. So please don't tell me how Christian I need to be when you don't have an understanding that Jesus turned the tables over for a reason, and he ordered his people to go. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to our last speaker, Bruce. Bruce, please proceed.
Yeah. My response to your problem is you guys created the problem, maybe not necessarily you people sitting on the board, but you are actually wanting to extend the problem that's been going on for decades. You know, all your gender-bending studies and everything like that, trying to convert young children through the education system, it's no wonder they're all confused and messed up and grew up to be messed up as well. And I pray for you guys. I'll end it there.
Thank you. That ends public comment, Mr. President.
All right. I will again have the privilege of moving to approval of this resolution. Is there a second? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take the roll call vote. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item nine, which is a resolution authorizing and directing the president of the board to execute a subscription service agreement with Anna Plan Inc. to provide a budget software as a service platform and execute a master service agreement. Service agreement with TrueEd Consulting, Inc. to provide services relating to the software in an aggregate amount not to exceed $6,27,118, which includes possible option years. Mr. Mankeah?
Good morning, President Canepa, honorable members of the board, supervisors, Mr. Calguy and Mr. Niblin. So this item before you is actually a change in direction that we have taken over the course of the last few years. We're really trying to think through what the future needs to look like in our finance departments across the county, and we want to make sure that they have the tools that adequately will serve them in the future. So a year ago, we actually started a... So a year ago, we actually started a group together with all the county departments and got together with them to kind of get information from them on what a new budget system was needed. Actually, a little bit further, what we needed more on the financial side of the House. The current system that we have, Sherpa, has been with us for seven years. It actually was a replacement system for a system that was actually adopted in 1980, which was BRAS. That system was not working for us any longer. It was no longer supported. And the nice part about Sherpa was is that one of the gentlemen that helped put BRAS together actually was one of the founding partners of the Sherpa unit. So we had brought them on board to make sure that the data from BRAS rolled over to the new system and was able to function as it did before, so there were no hiccups in the system that we had in there. Over the course of the last year, we've talked with the departments, and they were looking for enhancements of the budget system for planning, budget formulation, publishing, monitoring, and reporting. They want to streamline some of the budget processes. They want to use potential system to change the way that we update the budget on a regular basis and maybe look at it over the future years rather than always going backwards and looking at the past. They want to be able to publish digital formats rather than something that has to be published by hand and really begin to do things that the GFOA and other bodies that are fiscally across the nation are looking at today. The other piece was really adding AI and BI to the system and really trying to garner those into the functions of finance so that we could better our futures coming up. So what we did is we actually started the RFP process and we began to look at all these systems. We included county departments as part of the RFP process. We brought them on board to kind of look at all of the information that was out there. Departments actually got together and voted on the systems that would actually do presentations. And then we went through, I believe, five presentations that we sat through and listened for an entire day. We allowed them to present, and then at the end of the day, we all sat down and deliberated. It actually took about three days to get to the final deliberation of who we would want to use. And TrueGov and Anaplan became the system of choice. The reason for this was that Anaplan is a national system. It is used in many different instances. It is not only used for finance, but it's used all over the nation in different applications. And that is the system on the backend. That is the software that we will be purchasing. And TrueGov will be our implementer. So just like if we were to purchase other systems out there, TrueGov is kind of like the Deloitte where they take an existing system that is the backend and they help build the frontend of it so that it works for your county. And that's what TrueGov will be doing for us. There are a couple of things that you will see within the agreement. You will see that there's an increase in Anaplan after the second year. That is because we are asking them for more AI and BI at that point. Anaplan has given to us that they're going to be putting about $500 million into their AI backend. So over the course of the next five years, so that became a very interesting platform for us to have. And then for TrueGov, you see that we have an existing contract that grows over time, and they're the ones that are going to be implementing the system for us, obviously with us, but implementing the system for us. So this really is kind of taking that next step on the fiscal venture to try and really look at things in a little bit of a different way. And this is the direction we would like to take over the course of the next, hopefully, 10 years at least.
Are there any questions for Mr. Mankeah?
I just wanted to ask if, you know, at the last meeting, I requested time to make sure employees are informed about this policy change, so they know that they have... Oh, I'm sorry. Different item. What item are we on?
Item nine.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm confused. Okay.
No problem.
No questions.
I'll be up here again, so...
So explain to me their vendor record with other clients. My understanding is that the state of Nebraska has terminated their contract. My understanding is that there are other entities that have concern with Anaplan. Can you sort of alleviate those fears? I believe it's Nevada. The community college system in Nevada has terminated. Can you speak a little bit, Robert? I don't know if we have someone from Anaplan here to sort of address those concerns?
So we did bring Anaplan and TrueGov. They are online. Sherry, if you could please make them a panelist?
Yes, sure.
But I will give you a little bit of background on our end of this. So that you know, Washoe County, Nevada, and the Nevada Department of Education were actually part of our reference check, and we did do references with them. And there were some conversations about hiccups in getting things started. They had a different implementer at the time. It was not TrueGov at that time. But the understanding that we have, and we can ask the panelists to be able to come on and explain, but what we're seeing is that they are still in Nevada in both the Washoe County and with the Nevada Department of Education. And on the Nebraska side, what we found is there were some issues in regards to how the units were getting put together. There was an implemented and pushing it out. It has now been adopted, and it is being used in Nebraska as well. So it is being used for all of those that are out there. I'm not certain. I see Brock on, if Brock would like to explain, or Jesse would like to explain a little bit more about what's going on with Nevada and Nebraska.
Before we do that, Robert, I have a question for you, too. I don't know if you should... You could take it now. Looking at the agreement, can you talk about the financials of jumping? Is it year two to 100% increase? Or do you want... Should we take this first and then maybe follow?
It's up to you, but I actually, when we looked at the agreement, it's really about the AI and BI. So really trying to bring those on after we put the implementation of an existing system in place is where those costs begin to increase. So bringing on that AI module and those modules that will actually help us forecast and do some different type of business than we've done in the past and help us do budget monitoring a little bit differently will be done through the system. So the idea is that's the AI and BI piece that we will be adding at that point in time into the system itself.
And that's 100% increase?
Almost 100% for the software increase, yes.
Okay. If we could speak with representatives from Anaplan and TrueGov?
Sure, please proceed.
Hi, hoping everyone can hear me. This is Jess O'Shea from Anaplan. I'm the California Public Sector Account Executive, and I've been with Anaplan over two years. Thank you for having me, truly. I am happy to address these concerns. I also will first start by saying I believe the increase on the software for year two is about $75,000. That's on the actual software. I believe there could be an increase more on the services side, but it's not double. So I apologize for any confusions there.
That's on your side you're referring to, correct?
Yep, on the software side. Yep, and that's for the increase in year two, $75,000 is for the AI forecasting and AI technology. So I definitely want to address your concerns, and you know, I'll just say although Anaplan is not a perfect company, we, our retention rate across the entire global company of over 2,500 customers is, for the last five years, 96.8%, and on the public sector org is over 98%. We have many happy, successful customers, City of Tallahassee since 2017, CalSaw is at the State of California since 2020, Ventura County since 2021, University of California, San Diego, a very large, complex, you know, organization thriving since April 2024. We even have a statewide budget implementation being kicked off by the entire state of Minnesota, and they actually did a proof of concept where they, you know, put their actual data into Anaplan, and the entire state is going to be running their budgeting process this year, starting on Anaplan. So regarding these agencies, so I will say they unfortunately came on board as customers prior to us having a dedicated public sector team. In addition, State of Nebraska was not a successful deployment due to limitations with reporting, which, you know, very transparent about this, which it was a weakness of Anaplan, and Anaplan has since resolved. Anaplan, in April 2024, acquired a company called Fluence Technologies to fill the gaps that we had with narrative reporting and drastically increase the offering for state and local agencies to be able to report. So I really, that was the main issue, was just our gap in the narrative reporting. And, you know, so very unfortunate. I'll also call out that none of these customers that were mentioned were implemented by True Consulting. And who's on the line here with me, and I definitely want to pass it over to them to speak as well. I think that some of these, I can confidently say that this was a planning and services miss and really on some of these other ones that were mentioned, and not necessarily a software. You know, State of Nebraska, definitely a software limitation, but some of the other ones that were mentioned, I'd say more of a planning and services miss. And it's important, you know, to hear from True because really the partner deployment, the project management, the change management is all such a big piece of a successful project. So I'll go ahead and pass it over to True, but also I'll say outside of public sector, we have many thriving customers that are in your area on the commercial side. So I'll just throw out, you know, a couple of names who use Anaplan for financial planning. Cisco, Meta, Nvidia, LinkedIn, Netflix, Adobe, ServiceNow, Google, Del Monte, really just to name a few.
Do you have Palo Alto Networks?
Palo Alto Networks, that is a good question. I believe that they, you know, could be a customer that, yeah, maybe is not on Anaplan anymore.
That's correct. All right. I think there's another speaker online.
Yes, we have Brock and Wayland. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Wayland Ng from TrueGov Consulting. And just a few points I wanted to highlight. As part of the county's due diligence in terms of conducting reference checks, they had a chance to speak to various customers that we implemented Anaplan at, including, you know, federal, state, counties, et cetera, including NASA JPL, Nevada Department of Education, Washoe County, even states like State of Arizona. So they were all very favorable and really view us as a partner. And as Jess mentioned, we really see this as a partnership with the county. As a firm, TrueGov Consulting, we're 100% focused only on implementing Anaplan with public sector and government. So we care a lot about reputation and making sure that the county is really happy and successful because we want this to basically spread and, you know, have other counties throughout the nation adopt the solution and partner with TrueGov.
Robert, can you explain just the... I need to understand the RFP process. I'm concerned with moving forward on this particular item because of some of the challenges that Anaplan has had. Can you tell me about the sort of the RFP process, how you landed?
Certainly. So again, first, for the first six months, we did our inventory on our departments, literally looking at what it is that they needed and what it is that they were looking for. And what we heard a lot of is that they were looking for something new and something different that would actually help them in the process of putting a budget in, more so than the manual operations that we have today. So in looking at those things, we really put an RFP together where we went out for, I believe, it was almost two months, where we did sessions in the middle where we would talk to each of those vendors that were interested. We ended up with, I believe it was 10 to 12 vendors, 11 vendors in total, sorry. 11 vendors in total that went to a committee. Of the 11 vendors that went to the committee, five of them, four of them, were pushed forward for review. And the reason...
Who were those four? I'm just curious.
So it was TrueGov and Anaplan. It was Sherpa themselves, our existing system. It was WorkBrain and Gravity. Those were the four. And of the four, we sat down and we brought departments back in and sat in a room, and we had each of them come in and give us presentations. So they went through and in some cases, put our information into their documents and showed it to us, Anaplan and TrueGov being one of those, and others just did information that they had. What we were really looking for and the questions that were being asked were really about how they would implement the process, what type of future aspects they were going to be able to offer, because what we found within the existing system was a little bit of blocking when it came to the futuring of the system itself. And we sat in the room, and Anaplan and TrueGov, after, like I said, three days of having conversations, became the utmost. We did second. We also had a third. And what we did is we did reference checks on both the first, which is TrueGov, and the second-place contender at that point in time, just so that we were aware. We had conversations during that time with TrueGov because of a few concerns. They actually gave us Nebraska as one of the people for them to talk to. And we had concerns, and we brought it back to them, and they explained the concerns. So we went back to Nebraska and rehad a conversation with them. And those concerns came out to be different than what it was that we were originally thinking. So with that, we went through and did a full reference check on quite a few different places for both Anaplan and TrueGov, and it came to the conclusion that they would be the better party to work with over the course of the next few years.
Got it. And they provided for us approval of concept?
They did.
All right. Are there any additional questions? Don't we have public comment?
Mr. President, I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so I'll take comments now from Zoom. We have one hand raised, so at this time, I'll go ahead and just make a final call for receiving public comment. This is for item nine. Okay, final call has been made, and two speakers. We have Tad and Bruce. Tad, please unmute and begin.
Well, here we are again. You guys are going to be spending money, and you're claiming that our county is completely funded with plenty of reserves. Have you ever thought about lowering tax rates for we, the people, who are in and your constituents, who are paying these exorbitant property taxes to live here? Since you're so well organized and so well, and your expenditures are so under control, why don't you wake up and give back to the people instead of continue to spend? Stick with the system that you have. You should actually mitigate some of our other problems and get rid of the voting machines. The Dominion voting machines are completely corrupt, and you continue to go down that path. These NGOs that are infiltrating our county, and some of you are sitting on the boards of some of these, we are going to be watching. And I would, you know, I would recommend that you guys be above board and keep things currently status quo, kick back some money to the constituents, lower our taxes, and stop with this spending.
Thank you. We'll go to the next speaker, Bruce. Please proceed.
And while you're at it, repent, because I don't know if any of you really can show any constitutional authority that grants you to go down all these various places in delegating authority to other organizations and what have you. And, you know, along with the entire judicial system that's been taken over by all the NGO partners and everybody that you guys work with, stop and think about what you're doing.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment, Mr. President.
All right. Can I get a motion for A and B?
So moved.
Second.
Great. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller's absent. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mankeah. That brings us to item 10. This is from the County Executive, which introduces an ordinance that amends the San Mateo County Ordinance Code to add Section 2.10.065 concerning government claims repealing and replacing Chapter 2.72 of the Ordinance Code, governing reimbursement of employee expenses. In waiving the reading of the ordinance in its entirety, this item was brought back from earlier this year. Mr. Mankeah?
Good morning, President Canepa, Honorable Members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Calgey and Mr. Niblin. This is being brought back. We have gone through, and we did make an edit to the existing information that's here. What we did is we actually added the information that is part of the policy itself that will be implemented after the ordinances are done. And it is to state that after a 60-day period, that the staff can turn it in to their director of their agency to have things approved going forward. So there is a period of time. I think one of the things that I believe is really important is that if it is due to our staff, we're going to pay it. I think that's really kind of the... I think that's really kind of the idea and the gist. And what we thought about within this is that if the ordinance would be approved, it would take 30 days to have the ordinance approved. And then after that, the policy would actually not go out and be signed by Mike until January. So that would give us two months to literally sit down and focus and send emails and correspondence out to staff to let them know. I do want to bring up that we did send this out, as I stated before, to the unions. We did that in July. The unions came back to us in August. We had one union that actually wanted to meet and confer. We sat down with that union and went through their list of things that they wanted. And we gave them, I would say, made changes to the document to accept most of the things that they were asking us to do. One of the things that we were unable to do is actually change place of work, which is a space in which people are located that actually sits in our workday system and that has to be their starting point for their travel. So other than that, we gave them anything else that they needed. There was one where they were asking if, if the travel document, because you have to turn in a document now with travel that says that I traveled from here to here and it gives you the route, and if the route crosses a bridge and it shows it on the map that you had to cross the bridge, you no longer have to turn in a receipt for that. And that was accepted by the controller's office as well. So we have made changes according to what the unions were requesting and we did meet with them over time. So this is, again, a contribution of over 18 months worth of work between everybody. It did include the unions and included the attorneys. We really got everybody involved in this to really try and make it something that we could actually stand on. And the reason for the ordinances being in front of you is that currently, we have three policies or two policies for travel that are a bit different. And we also have some ordinances that don't completely align. So the reason for this change is because the ordinance need to align with the travel policy. So we have one document that does both. It covers all the travel and it covers all the ordinances that are out there as well. And they're the same.
Good job, Robert. Are there any questions?
No questions. I think this is a very generous policy. And I think the more we can encourage employees to submit their expenses, the less they're covering the interest on their credit card. So it's to their advantage and to our advantage that these be presented in a timely fashion. The fact that we're at 150% and 170% of CONUS is, I believe, generous. And I would move the amendment, the, what are we doing here?
I got a question.
Move the ordinance.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Question, Mr. Manke, how do we, you know, in some agencies, not this particular agency, but just community college, you read the news throughout the state, there are some people who abuse sort of the travel provision, right? They may go to places, they may spend, you know, extra money and charge the county. What sort of protections do we have?
So every expense report is gone through. So for all the Board of Supervisors, they go to the county attorney's office. We go through them as well. For departments, they go through their fiscal departments and they are scrutinized. And then after our scrutiny in the departments, it actually goes to the controller's office and gets scrutinized again. So they literally have a place in a group that actually goes through all expense reports as they come in. They're looking for verifications of where they were at, what they were at. And then they also look at the idea of, is it an allowable expense? Does it fit within the things that we're allowing within that space? So they do go through all of that within both the department and the controller's office before it is paid.
Right. Now, and this community college district will go unnamed throughout the state, but there was an issue on alcohol being used on a county credit, county credit card. And so I think we want to protect ourselves and I think that's what you just said.
Mr. President, I think the distinction there is that, you know, we don't typically have folks traveling on county credit cards. We have folks seeking reimbursement in the ordinary course.
And that's one of the reasons why we do that, President Canepa, to really ensure control so we can look at the receipts. And I can assure you that we strictly adhere to the policy of no alcohol can ever be purchased and will not have any of these trips in charge of the county.
That's great to hear. Thank you. There's a motion, there's a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Would you like to take public comment before?
Yeah, sure.
We don't have any-
And I bet you there's 10 people on this item.
Yes, you're on, you're on point here, as usual. We don't have any cards from chambers, but we do have a hand raised and that is Tad. Tad, please proceed.
Well, here we go again. The fox guarding the hen house. You guys are assuring us, the constituents, that you have oversight of the budget and the budgetary items that are going on within the county. It's laughable. You're all lawless. You removed a sheriff, a duly elected sheriff through a process, and now we are a lawless county. And now you're acting as if you're lawful and you're following guidelines and ordinances, which I've mentioned to you earlier, have all been overthrown through the Chevron deference case. Chevron deference has been overturned. Your charter, your ordinances, your rules, your regulations do not stand. Continue to go down this path. We've been asking you to repent and you better go and pray. You need to pray and repent. We, the people, are watching.
Thank you, Tad. No further comments, Mr. President, but we do have the motion on the floor. So I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller's absent. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We now have two Measure K items, beginning with item 11, which authorizes funds not to exceed $30,000 to St. Vincent de Paul of San Mateo County to address food insecurities through its San Mateo Homeless Help Center and Palinsula Family Resource Center. Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. Give me one second, sorry. Let me get caught up here on where I am on my notes. Okay, here we go. Thank you, President Canepa. Unfortunately, this grant has been made even more relevant, given the federal administration's refusal to fund SNAP benefits across the country, or fully fund SNAP benefits across the country. And even here, in one of the wealthiest counties in the country, food insecurity is a deep problem that worsens during the holidays when children don't have access to meals at school. I'd like to invite an amazing leader in our community, Pat Carbuiido from St. Vincent de Paul, to share about the important work that this will fund in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo. Thank, hi, Board of Supervisors, County Executive Mike Calkey. I'm Pat Carbuiido. I'm the CEO at St. Vincent de Paul for San Mateo County. And like Supervisor Corzo said, we're in a desperate need. We feed the homeless, we feed the poor, and this funding is so valuable for us. We serve over 2,800 meals every month just to, in San Mateo, in the city of San Mateo, over 6,000 every month through the county of San Mateo. And obviously, our funding, you know, from Second Harvest, things like that, have been really, really cut. And so in addition to feeding the homeless at our Homeless Help Center on B Street, this funding also allow us to help the students when they're on winter break, when they usually get meals at school. We can actually, we do our home visit and so we can deliver food, nutritious food to their family and to the students on their winter break coming up. So this funding is, like I said, is so valuable to St. Vincent de Paul's mission and to help the residents and the citizens of San Mateo County. So I really, really appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
Mr. President, I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so I'll now ask for comments on Zoom. This is for item number 11. Please go ahead and raise your hand at this time.
Back to Supervisor Corzo?
I have a question. I may have a comment. Pat, it was great being with you in South San Francisco to see what you're doing there. Phenomenal work. We just passed $900,000 in additional funding to the core agencies in San Mateo County for food distribution. Do you not receive any of that money?
We do not directly. So the core agencies, you know, they'll, they'll get the referral first and then whatever we can assist after the core agencies. But I know that 900,000, we do not get anything directly from that.
So this would, I support your work. I would support funding the St. Vincent de Paul Society countywide. I don't support district-only proposals. So you have, you have a facility in South San Francisco and in San Mateo, and you have another jurisdiction-
We have a thrift store in Menlo Park.
In Menlo Park. But that's not food distribution there. So the food distribution is just at those two sites.
South San Francisco and San Mateo.
All right.
But I want to do clarify, we do do home visits throughout the county, through the churches, what we call conferences. So we do help them fund, you know, we give out gift cards and food directly countywide through our assistance.
But this particular funding is only for-
San Mateo.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you say no public comments?
We do have one on Zoom, Mr. President. So I'll go ahead and call Sabrina. Sabrina, please unmute and begin.
I just would like to advise the non-governmental organizations, your quote-unquote partners, public partners, that they are agents of the state. When you take grants and money and funding from the state, you are also subject to the constitutions and those oaths of office, which means basically that under Article, I would suggest should be California Constitution, Article 20, Section 3, and also Article 3, Section 1, that states the U.S. Constitution is the supreme law of the land. And I believe somebody had already mentioned Chevron deference, just Jakarski versus the United States. Justice Gorsuch put a tombstone on it, the federal, you cannot make laws outside the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the end of public comment, Mr. President.
Thank you. I would like to move forward with approval of this item. And I want to also take a moment to clarify that this grant is for $30,000. San Mateo is the largest city in the county of San Mateo and people are in desperate need of food right now. So I hope that we have a unanimous vote in support of this item.
Second.
I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Supervisor Spear?
Not voting.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Hey. Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Item 12, our final item is item 12, which is another Measure K item, authorizing funds not to exceed 47,000, oh, $46,866 to Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you, President Canepa. I'm really excited about this grant, which will go to the Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County to train pro bono attorneys to take on DV cases. Legal aid's commitment with this grant is huge and it'll have a large and ongoing impact on our county's ability to serve survivors of domestic violence. I also want to add that legal aid has, for many, many years, supported DV survivors in this work. And this is just for the ability to expand that work and bring more private attorneys who are interested in helping but don't have the bandwidth to do DV cases full-time, to kind of expand the, the landscape of attorneys who are able to help survivors who are in desperate need of support, especially legal support. I believe we have Stephanie Belinski from Legal, Legal Aid, San Mateo County's pro bono director, online on Zoom. And I'd like to invite her to share a few words.
Okay, Stephanie, if you can accept the request? Okay. Okay, please proceed.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Stephanie Belinski. I'm the pro bono director of Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. And as part of my position, I supervise our domestic violence pro bono project. This is our largest pro bono project and it's part of the San Mateo Domestic Violence Collaborative. Along with our partner agencies, Cora and Bay Area Legal Aid, we strive to provide legal representation in family court to as many domestic violence survivors as possible. Domestic violence survivors cite their number one unmet need as legal representation. And the overwhelming majority of survivors go unrepresented in court in their domestic violence restraining orders. These often involve issues such as child custody, visitation, child support, spousal support. Our clients are scared. They often speak limited English and they must face their abusers in court. Without legal representation, many clients are unable to explain their position to the court or they drop their case because they're too scared to go forward, which leaves them further at risk. Funding of legal services is in danger and these cuts do irreparable damage to our clients. Not only are they facing physical danger from their abuser, but they're facing financial insecurity, homelessness, being separated from their children. The, the major portion of the funding for this program has been cut. And so we thank you all for consideration of refunding this program for the next year in order that we are able to provide legal services. Our partner agencies provide incredibly important direct staff-based legal services. But due to lack of resources and cuts, they cannot represent every person that walks through their doors. So my job at Legal Aid Society is to leverage the local private legal community to fill that gap. And with these funds, we'll be able to continue training, mentoring, and supporting attorneys to represent low-income survivors at a time when federal and state priorities have shifted and our clients are making, are facing more obstacles than ever in leaving their abusers. We would like to thank Supervisor Corzo and the Board of Supervisors for supporting this important work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'd like to motion to approve this and I want to share a fun fact. This grant actually does fund private attorneys to be trained all over the county. And our colleague, Supervisor Ray Mueller, is actually one of the attorneys they've trained. And so I want to give him a shout out, even though he's not here, for taking the initiative to do that and for being part of how we improve services for domestic violence survivors in our county. And I am not a lawyer, but I would encourage any other lawyers we have in the room and in Zoom and just in the broader community to volunteer and be a part of this initiative. Thank you.
Okay, I think-
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Did we have public comment on this?
Oh, yes. Apologies. We should probably take public comment, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so I'll go ahead and take them on Zoom. And we do have one hand raised currently. This is for item number 12. Tad, please proceed.
Yeah, it's interesting to hear how you guys have it slanted all in one direction in regards to the victim. I was a male victim of domestic violence approximately 10 years ago. There was no support for me. But I can see that you totally support women. It's one-sided. The other thing that's interesting is that you just came out and committed another crime in stating that one of the Board of Supervisors is double-dipping. He's actually going to be receiving benefit. So you're funding something that one of the Board of Supervisors is benefiting from. It's very interesting. I think there should be a line drawn in the sand that they should not be supporting those kind of projects unless it is for free. We don't know. We'll have to look at the budget. But good luck with it all.
Supervisor Spear?
I think it's important to point out that these services are available to men and women and that those persons, those lawyers who are going to be taking on these cases are doing so pro bono, which means for free. And I think that this is a great program for leveraging talent.
Mr. President, if I also may say, I used to volunteer doing pro bono legal work for, for victims or survivors of domestic violence. And I can tell you, there is no benefit other than the intrinsic benefits you get from this. There is no, there's nothing that Supervisor Mueller is receiving other than volunteering his time in regard to this.
Thank you so much. There's a motion, there's a second. And Tad, I just want to tell you, if you need help or anything, feel free to, you know, to reach out to my office. But, you know, if you were a victim, we do have Cora and other agencies that can assist you. So with that-
We have one more public comment, Mr. President.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and take Bruce. Bruce, please proceed.
Hi, yes. I just have a question. In whose jurisdiction do you work these people to be in? And I'll end it there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll take the roll call vote. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Through the county attorney, I know we're going into closed session. Are we reporting out?
We may have one thing to report out.
Okay. That, we will- That, we will... We will be right back. Thank you.
Great. The time is now 12:53 PM and the board is recessing to closed session.